Today is February 22, 2024. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting is being conducted in person via remote and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately assess the proceedings as provided in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410. Conference ID 662-087-738. All join the meeting via the Microsoft Teams link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with the town policy, the public can speak to any issue, hearing, or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. The meetings are run as followed. Sarah Clark is the town's central permitting officer, and she will read each application. Then there'll be a presentation by the applicant or their professional. And for the benefit of anyone who's not been privy to any of our meetings, we have 12 criteria that are addressed, and every criteria is noted by the applicant, whether it's applicable or not, they will state so. And topics such as scaling and mass and adequacy of size of the site for the project are always discussed at length at every single meeting. After the criteria are addressed by the applicant, the public will receive an opportunity to speak in favor of the application. Next, I'll read the correspondences, and there'll be public opportunity to speak against or ask questions. The applicant may then have a rebuttal time. After that, the board asks questions. We will then vote to close the public hearing, and the board deliberates, as mentioned, and we focus the deliberations on whether or not the projects meet the applicable criteria. We vote on the merits of the application, and to prevail, the applicant needs a supermajority, which is four out of five votes in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Next, we may discuss conditions of the project, and we will end the meeting with a verbal confirmation to adjourn noting the time. So at this time, we need members to confirm that they approve of this type of meeting. Virginia Fenwick?
Ginny votes yes.
Steve?
Steve DeBoer votes yes.
Lee?
Lee Hovey votes yes.
David Nixon?
I vote yes.
Ed Acton?
Yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
Okay, great. So the first thing I want to do is welcome Edward Acton. He is our newest member. Today is his first meeting, and he has got a lot of experience with building and construction, and we welcome him, and we look forward to learning from him, and he should have some great questions for all the applicants. And so at this point, we have a full membership of eight. Unfortunately, one of our members isn't here today. Voting today, Sarah, could you tell us who's voting today?
Steve will be the alternate voting today.
Okay, so Steve DeBoer, he's also a newer member. He will be voting today, along with Virginia Fenwick, David Nixon, David Veach, and myself. Okay, so first, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on January 25, 2024. Ginny?
Okay, I move to approve minutes of January 25, 2024.
Dave Veach, seconds.
Okay, Ginny?
Ginny approves.
I think this is just the members' vote on this, Steve. I approve.
Steve's voting today.
Steve's voting today, yes.
I approve.
And I approve.
I approve.
And I approve.
Very good. First application?
Okay, application number 24-001. The Douglas Rose Kemerly Revocable Trust, care of Andrew L. Singer Esquire, P.O., Box 67, Dennisport, Mass. 02639. Owner of property located at 169 Vineyard Avenue, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 10D Block 90, Lot D124. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the construction of additions and a deck. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and it is located within the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed addition and deck will be nonconforming, in that they will be located within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,647 square feet, 17.2%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,236 square feet, 20.9%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and it contains 10,700 square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Singer, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon for the record. My name is Andrew Singer. I'm an attorney in Dennisport here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Kemerly. I submitted a summary of reasoning prior to today, which I'll go through. Prior to that, though, I'd like to address two technical aspects of the application, one of which is that the site plan that you have had shown a proposed reconfiguration of the driveway. It is in a coastal conservancy district. That would have required a different special permit. It was overlooked. It was not part of the application, so what we're asking is to withdraw that part of the request. Well, it wasn't even part of the request. We're not proposing any changes to the driveway, and I would like to submit for the record an existing conditions plan to address that. Also, I'd like to just address some confusion that we realized in reading comment letters from neighbors. It was inadvertent. There was concern that the additional living space that is being proposed to be built out over the garage would become a second dwelling unit. And a second dwelling unit is not allowed here because, A, it's in the coastal conservancy district, B, we don't have enough upland, and C, that's not the intent of the owners. They were just creating some additional living space. There is a note on the plan that said no cooking facilities, but some of the terms on the some of the labeling was caused confusion. We've realized that, and speaking with Sarah, I saw the letters. So I wanted to note a couple things. One, that, as I will discuss in the main presentation, there is no desire to have anything other than a single-family dwelling unit to maintain on the property. Second, that we are proposing, if the board sees fit to approve the proposal, a condition asking you to include it that says that if the property is ever rented, similar to any property in Chatham, it will only be rented as a single unit. So I wanted to be very clear on the record, both in my testimony and in any decision you issue, that this is a single-family house and will stay a single-family house. Also, for the final change, and I want, with the chair's permission, would like to hand that out as well. I'm here with Chris Cannon, project architect, and Sean Riley, the project engineer. Chris prepared a slight 35-square-foot tweak to the floor plans to actually create an enclosed vestibule that will link up both parts of the first floor. So to avoid any question and any concern, so with the chair's permission, I'd like to submit these.
Sure.
And I'm looking at this because a couple of you will remember when I brought you something and I forgot the step was there, and I'm going to try to avoid that today.
Yeah. I don't remember that.
It was a while back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have to initial?
He's going to initial.
Okay.
Okay, all right. I followed up on that. I'm just going to initial. For the record, I initialed a copy of the plan, just X-ing out any change in the driveway, so the driveway will stay as it is. With all of that is a really long preamble. The plans you have before you are a request to renovate the house by constructing three additions. One is an additional garage bay to the left of the existing garages. It's at the lower level. This is a walkout front on the property. Second is to construct a one-and-a-half-story addition above the expanded garage, and that's what we'll go through in more detail, and I gave you that revised vestibule plan. And three, there's a 178-square-foot deck on the back of the house. The property is nonconforming as to lot size and sorry, it's conforming as to lot size and frontage, but it's pre-existing nonconforming as to buildable upland. So it's a 48,000-square-foot lot, but there's less than 11,000 square feet of upland. The dwelling itself conforms to all of the front, side, and rear setbacks. However, it too is pre-existing nonconforming as to building coverage and because it's in the coastal conservancy district. All of the proposed construction will comply with the floodplain regulations and for construction in the coastal conservancy district. All of the work, except for the proposed deck in the back of the house, is actually further away from the wetland than the existing dwelling. So the construction is on the landward side, the house construction's on the landward side of the existing house and the lot. The deck, though, is in the back and is in the area to the wetland. We have applied for a special permit under Section 5B to alter, extend, or change the pre-existing nonconforming structure. And as was noted in the introduction to the meeting, you are authorized to grant a special permit if a number of factors are met so that you can determine that the proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming conditions, and that those findings are met. Mr. and Mrs. Kemerly respectfully submit that in this instance, the proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, that it will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, or convenience of the town, and that it will satisfy the various conditions in the bylaw, specifically adequacy of the size of the site. The property has been developed and used for single-family residential purposes and is of a similar size, if not larger, than many of the other lots in the neighborhood, and that nothing's changing to the lot. It is where it is, and the only footprint increase on the property is on the landward side, filling in basically kind of a jog at the corner, front-left corner of the house. Number two, compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. We submit that the redeveloped house will remain compatible with the size and appearance of neighboring properties. It is actually very well screened from the road, if you've been down there, but even without that, it's a very small footprint addition, and the addition over the garage will, we submit, fit in with the neighborhood. Pre-existing nonconforming building coverage will go up from 17.2 to 20.9%. However, the proposed building itself, which is 2,125 square feet, is substantially less than the 2,800 square feet that is otherwise allowed in the zoning bylaw. So building coverage is going up slightly. That's why, part of the reason we're requesting a special permit, but this overall size of the house is going to remain well within limits that are set forth in the bylaw. Suitability of the site. The property has been developed and used for these single-family residential purposes for many years, and it's not going to change. And again, propose that condition to ask you to include in your decision that it is a single-family house, a single-family dwelling. It shall remain that, and if it's ever rented, it would only be rented as a single-family Impact of the scale, sighting, and mass, neighborhood visual character. The proposal will be in keeping, we submit, with the character of the neighborhood in terms of scale, sighting, and mass. It has been designed to blend in with the neighborhood's vernacular architecture, and the height, 26.7 feet plus or minus at its highest point, will remain conform. Would also note that in reading the three letters that came in, a couple of them, I don't think all of them, but a couple of them also noted that, by neighbors, that they didn't necessarily have a concern with the construction aspect of the proposal. There was a significant concern with any potential second dwelling. And so, again, that's off, was never on the table, and it's clearly not. Next review standard is compatibility of the proposed use with neighboring uses. I'm kind of doubling back on myself here, but there is going to be no change in the single-family use of the property. It's in a single-family residential neighborhood, and the proposal is to stay exactly that. If you look at the plan that's up at the moment, you can see where the third garage bay is and the one-and-a-half-story Cape-style addition that would be above just that portion. It's just over the garage. The main bulk of the house, as you see in the plans, is not changing at all. Town water service is the property. Stormwater runoff will be contained on-site, and there's going to be no negative impact nor harm to the groundwater, water supply, or drainage. And in fact, all of the construction will comply with the floodplain regulations so that it will be hopefully an improvement over the situation where older construction being upgraded. Impact on traffic flow and safety. There is adequate off-street parking for the continued residential use of the property that you can see on the plan with the existing driveway. There's going to be no increase of congestion in the public ways and no decrease in traffic safety. There is a proposed increase of one-bedroom to three in the structure. You have a letter from the Health Department that this property is connecting to sewer, so part of the proposal is abandoning the septic and as part of the connection to the town sewer, it has been allocated the three-bedroom capacity, so that is in compliance. In addition, the Conservation Commission has reviewed the proposal. They have voted to approve the project. They will be gathering next week to issue the order of conditions for that. Noise and litter. We submit that there'll be no nuisance, odors, sounds, or other negative impacts by maintaining the property for permitted single-family residential use. And finally, adequacy of utilities and other public services. The property is currently serviced by water, gas, electric, and none of those are changing. They all will remain. For all those reasons, the petitioners respectfully request that the board make the required findings a fact, find that the proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and grant the special permit to allow the work to be shown on the plans previously and updated today. If you have any questions for any of us, we'd be happy to answer them or anything on the plans. We appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Criteria? Did you? Yeah. All right, you incorporated. All right, good enough.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I was just going through them as I did.
Yeah, yeah, that's actually nice.
And it's in writing in my summary of reasoning.
Good way of doing it, yes, absolutely. Okay, does anyone here on Microsoft Teams have, like to speak in favor of this application? Please indicate. Seeing none, I will read the letters, the correspondence. Okay, February 15, we have a letter from the Conservation Commission saying that the Conservation Commission held a public hearing on February 14, 2024. The proposed project was continued to February 28, when it'll issue an order of conditions. The project, as proposed, has been conditioned to meet the performance standard under the Wetlands Protection Act, and it lists out the name of the law promulgated thereunder. Then there's a letter from Judith Giorgio, the health agent, on 2/13/2024. I have reviewed the plan to expand this dwelling via the garage and bedroom addition. This property was ordered to connect to town sewer by February 2025. This appears to be part of the proposed site plan. They are allowed to add an additional bedroom as part of the sewer connection. A detailed floor plan of the existing dwelling will be needed for our review. Next, we have a letter from, let's see, Vince Matola Jr., and that is written on February 21, 2024. Hi, my name is Vince Matola. My wife Kelly and I live at 149 Vineyard Ave since December of 2019. Our house, like many others in the area, was built in 1956. Zoning has been restricted to single-family dwellings. These homes, when built, were modest dwellings, but have been substantially modified with the current zoning restrictions. I have recently been made aware that the Douglas Ross Kemerly Revocable Trust of 169 Vineyard Ave is requesting a zoning variance to build two separate livable units for rental. Though I am not a direct abbot, granting this variance would adversely change the nature of the neighborhood. It would increase the traffic, encourage others to seek similar variances, which would have a negative effect on the property values. I'm adamantly opposed to this request and hope you view this the same way. If you wish to respond directly to me, please feel free to reply. Okay, next, we have a letter from Tim Tobin on February 22, 2024. I am writing to express my concern about the proposed zoning variance requested by the Douglas Ross Kemerly Revocable Trust on 169 Vineyard Avenue. While I would support the variance to expand the home, my concern is over the design, which seems to be built out to two separate rentable units and not just expand the home. I have contacted Mr. Kemerly, who states that he does not currently plan to rent out either unit, but he does see the possibility of renting one and possibly both in the future. As an abbot to the property in question, I am deeply concerned about the potential negative impacts having two rental units could have on our neighborhood. Number of occupants, street parking, increased traffic congestion, decreased property values, changes in the neighborhood character, just a few of my concerns. Furthermore, I believe that granting this variance would set a dangerous precedent for those future development, for the future development in our area. It's crucial that the zoning regulation be upheld to maintain the integrity and stability of the neighborhood. I respectfully urge the zoning board to consider these factors regarding this variance request by the trust. Thank you for considering my objections. I trust that the zoning board will carefully weigh all the factors before reaching a decision on this matter. Next, we have a letter from Huntley &amp; Martha Harrison, 154 Vineyard Ave, from February 11, 2024. As abotters to the Kemerly property, and after reviewing the plan to enlarge the current house to turn into two attached dwellings, we are formally registering our objection to this project. We do this for a variety of reasons, none the least of which is that the property and the house are nonconforming and located in the coastal the house are nonconforming and located in the coastal conservatory district. We also feel that with two possible rental properties on the same lot is not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The majority of the homes on Vineyard Ave are single-family dwellings that mostly, are mostly inhabited on a year-round basis. We also do not see this as an accessory dwelling unit as mostly inhabited on a year-round basis. We also do not see this as an accessory dwelling, as the Kemmerlys really use the dwelling, the house now, and would have no oversight on the renter. With two separate dwellings, the issue of oversight is doubled. Do we, do we know the owner will be living full-time in one of the houses? This is a crucial question. In talking with the neighbors, I do not believe that we, that will be the case. The Kemmerlys will essentially be absentee landlords. I believe the neighborhood would be extremely upset if this property turned into a VRBO or Airbnb-type property with the constant turnover. This is not a good precedent to set here or anywhere in Chatham. The Kemmerlys are nice people, but we strongly object to this project, not only as an abutter, but also for the sake of the neighborhood. Would you like an opportunity to rebut?
Only to say, as I said previously, obviously, you understand why we realized the concern when we were reading those three letters that came in. There is no, again, understand why, hope that the, what we've testified to today, the condition that we've offered, want to allay any concerns of both neighborhood and yourselves, obviously, that this is going to be anything other than a single-family house. It's not an ADU, it's not a second dwelling. When they are here, they don't live here full-time, but when they are here, Mr. Kemmerly actually works from home, and so this is a way to allow them to have some of their own space in the house. But again, I'm not rebutting in the sense of disagreeing with anything they wrote, only to say that we hear what they're saying, and it's not going to be that.
Okay, and I also need to just check to see, is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this project or has a question?
There is no in opposition of the question at this time.
Okay, so questions from the board.
Well, I, you know, I read the letters too, and I, and I was looking, and I, you know, certainly saw the note in Andrew's correspondence about no cooking facilities, which means that it can't be considered, it's not to be considered a dwelling unit as per our bylaw. So I'm fine with that. I'm, I guess I'm curious whether they, there was any consideration given to the idea of maybe in the future this becoming an ADU or not. You know, it seems like it's a situation that could be converted to an ADU. Were they to, someone in the future considered doing that?
I think someone other than me has an answer.
Yeah, Chris, happy to hear.
So Chris Cannon, for the record, architect record. I've been working on this for well over two years now with the Kemmerlys, and there has never been a discussion of this being an ADU. From the very first day, this was a place for Linda Kemmerly to go and hang out, really that simple. And I don't know where the discussion of, you know, other than the fact that I wrote kitchen mistakenly, I guess, on there, where the idea became that there were, you know, came that there was an apartment. But I think the response of adding this thirty-five-foot vestibule, hopefully that allays the fears that, you know, these are two separate places. But no, it is not going to be an ADU. It can't be on this site.
Okay, I just, I just wanted, because I, you know, I couldn't help but note that at least one of the letters in opposition was saying that, you know, it wasn't an ADU and raised some objections that, and I was just kind of going into, well, what if someone did propose an ADU in that neighborhood? And the nature of the objections, and some of the objections were raised. The ADU bylaw, I looked back a little bit, and it was amended in twenty twenty-two specifically to allow someone on a nonconforming property to do a byright ADU within the house, and also to remove the condition that both units had to be occupied year-round in order to create the ADU. The idea was to try to make it a little easier in a sort of sense to create an ADU. But I understand that that's not part of this. I also understand that, you know, there are various other reasons for people to want to have a, be able to sequester off a part of the house from the other part of the house. So that's the only question I have on this.
Okay, thank you. Judy, questions?
Yes. Mr. Singer, can you just re-explain the condition that you talked about? Did you say, is it deed restricted, or is it just, well, let me let you?
What we're proposing is a condition in your decision, so your decision's recorded and becomes binding on the title to the property. So it would be a condition saying that if the property is ever rented in the future, it shall only be rented as a single-family dwelling property. Because that's a condition in a ZBA decision that's recorded, if there was ever a violation of that, it could be enforced through the Building Department in an enforcement order and effectively show cause back to the board. But that's the condition I'm proposing. So it's a, it's not a deed restriction, it's not a restriction in the deed, but it's on the chain of title through your decision.
Okay, and that would apply to future owners of the property? If it were ever sold, that would carry through, or?
Yes. Yeah, your decision, or any ZBA decision on the property would carry forward for future owners.
Okay, so no sense of why Mr. Tobin, the neighbor, has indicated in his correspondence that he spoke to the owner, and the owner said, I might rent both?
Yeah, I did not speak to Mr. Kemmerly specifically about that. I don't know what conversations they might have had. Maybe he just said something off the cuff, I don't know. But if so, that was an error. And again, that's not, and I spoke, and Mr. Kemmerly emailed me actually a little while before the meeting today, saying that, no, you know, what I, the condition I proposed is what they propose.
Okay. Can you clarify again for me the vestibule or the shared opening and exact, because I think part of the, you said, or Chris, maybe you said you were confused at some of the correspondence, but, I mean, I know when I looked at it, I thought it was very curious that it has completely, fully redundant everything in the second. It almost was like a house on top of a house. So I had the same question. I mean, another bedroom, another laundry room, another bathroom, another kitchen, another, so it does appear that way. And then there's, it's a little hard to tell from the site plan or the plans, but it looks like there's no connectivity. And now you're saying there is going to be this vestibule. Can you describe that a little more?
From a legal point of view, and I'll let Chris handle the architecture, but from a legal point of view, there's no requirement that it has to be connected. You know, when you have living space in another part, whether it's over a garage, often is over a garage, on attached garages or not, it doesn't have to be connected. But I understand when it's not connected, it raises, you know, questions. So what, you know, Chris did do is he proposed this vestibule on that, was it the west deck?
Yeah, it's on the west deck. So there are a lot of quirks in this house. One that is, the roofs, the ceilings are really low. I think they might be less than seven feet inside. So the next quirk is that the garage is existing, two-car garage, and the floor of the attic is, which is fairly substantial, we're hoping to reuse, is almost two feet above the first floor of the house. So it's not a natural progression to go from one end to the next, and because of the ceilings, you can't just do a stairway because you'd hit your head on the ceiling. So, and by, you know, cutting it, you're cutting into the second floor bedroom. So I sat and I tried to figure a new way to, you know, make a connection after we saw these letters. And the vestibule allowed us to have something that sort of bypasses all that with steps in that vestibule to get you into the new space. Now, as far as the new space is concerned, we find more and more these days as people age out, we get grandchildren, we have guests that come to stay with us, and a lot of my clients want a place where they can go and be, where they don't have to deal with any of that at any given moment. And that's essentially the way this has been conceived of, that this is a place where Linda can go and meditate, be on her own, and be away from all that. They're, they're here mid to late spring through until almost November typically. So they are here quite some time. It's not that they're barely here, as you, you know, might have heard in one of the letters.
So the vestibule discussion and then your diagram was subsequent to the paperwork and everything that we had? This is sort of a newer?
Yeah, new this week.
Okay, so what was the original entryway into that part of the house?
It was actually a, in the same location, it was just a doorway. So I pushed the doorway out four foot four, something like that, to the north, and created the vestibule so that it would allow you to take the window that's in the living room and turn that into a doorway, essentially.
So the existing entryway was within the house? It wasn't an exterior entryway?
No, it wasn't. The existing doorway was outside. It was using the same deck as the entry to the house.
The vestibule is right there now.
Okay, okay, all right.
And again, the reason we didn't do it was it was a challenge, you know, by doing it from the house, so.
Okay. Chris or Mr. Singer, can you confirm? I know you said that the height of the building is conforming and that it's twenty-six, but it is taller than the other existing building by three and a half feet. Can you confirm that?
Yes.
And then one last question. I just, I wasn't sure what the, on the site plan, three hundred ninety square feet, the proposed addition, I couldn't reconcile that number to gross floor area or building coverage. What's three ninety representing?
The three ninety is the new garage area on the ground.
Just the garage? So?
It's the footprint on the ground, not the whole, not what's above it, just the footprint.
So wouldn't that be building coverage too? Wouldn't that be?
Yes, that's where the building, that's where the building coverage is going from seventeen point?
Sixteen forty-seven to twenty-two thirty-six is five hundred eighty-nine, which is why I just wondered why, where three ninety was coming from.
Can't read, is that sixteen or is it eighteen?
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing it because it's a difference of two hundred, almost two hundred square feet.
I think, I think the existing coverage is eighteen forty-seven going to twenty-two thirty-six, but I see Sean calculating back there as well. The plan I have here is small, and I can't read the number very clearly.
Okay.
Three eighty-nine.
It's three eighty-nine? Yeah, so Sean is saying he just measured, it's three eighty-nine, they rounded up to three ninety on the plan.
Okay, so sixteen forty-seven is not correct, it's eighteen forty-seven?
I think it's, it says eighteen forty-seven. It's hard to read, it's not sixteen forty-seven, it's eighteen on the zoning table.
Initially, we had gotten the, we had gotten eleven by seventeen plan, which was difficult to read. On the, on the full-size plan that we did get a copy for the file, it is reflecting eighteen forty-seven, equalling seventeen point two percent.
Okay, so it's okay that the ad, because it's under, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
So I'm just going to interject, speaking of the ad, the vestibule, does that increase the building coverage more than was advertised? The vestibule?
It would increase it thirty-five square feet, so yes.
It's nominal, but it's on a deck, it's not over, you know, it's over an existing deck, it's not over open space at the moment.
All right, so we need to ascertain whether or not we have to re-advertise. One second.
So it was, it was advertised with a specific number because you are pre-existing nonconforming as to the fifteen percent, but not more than twenty-eight hundred. The increase in the size of the vestibule should be re-advertised, re-noticed, to abutters because it's not what was applied for. And I know when, and Jay can speak to it more often than not, but when they're looking at a building permit coming in, they're looking to make sure that it's consistent with what the ZBA approval was. We don't have a site plan to reflect that for this increase in square footage.
So if I, you know, can just say, if, if it makes a difference to not do the thirty-five square-foot addition, the vestibule, and go back to the original, which you do have, the use is not going to be any different. The only difference is there's no immediate connection from this new space into the existing space. That was the intent from the beginning. We just figured we would offer you, you know, this, you know, whatever it is to make the connection, if you felt that was important.
So this is your application, and so you tell us what you prefer, and if it's keeping the vestibule, we're going to have to stop this moving train and come back another time?
If the board is otherwise, as Chris said, since no, there's no substantive change to any other part of the application, if the board is comfortable moving forward without the vestibule, then let's move forward without the vestibule.
We're comfortable doing what you, what you would like to do, so.
All right, for now, let's, let's do that.
We can't say we're going to, we're going to allow it if you have it, or if you don't, you know, we can't make any kind of remarks about that.
Yeah, because, because legally, as I noted in my presentation, since it doesn't have to be an enclosed connection, it was done in an attempt to try to address the concerns we had heard, but if, with the conditions we proposed and everything else, and I'd submit that the board can find, even without the vestibule, that this is a, not a substantially greater detriment, then we would ask you to put the vestibule plan to the side and look at the original plan as advertised, which has the direct access that Sarah had up on the screen here a few minutes ago.
Well, this is your choice, so is that what you'd like to do?
At this point, yes. Depending on what you guys do in a few minutes, I may change my mind, but.
Yeah, we can't make any assurances as to that. All right, so we'll continue, we'll, all right, you huddled?
We're good.
We'll continue with the questions, and you can, you can back out if you'd like, all right? Depending on how this all goes. Steve DeBoer, questions?
Some of my questions have, sorry, some of my questions have been asked already, but there was something you alluded to in your initial comments about the driveway, and that you were excluding any changes to the driveway for now. How are you going, what are you going to do with that driveway?
Oh, what I meant is they're not proposing any changes to the driveway. So if you approve the proposed change to the house, then there'll be no change to the driveway. If they in the future want to change the driveway, then they would have to file a new special permit application and come to you, and the planning board would review and give you advisory comments on that.
Right, as long, okay, as long as you're going to address that. My other question has to do with the nonconformity. I understand half the house, or at least a good portion of it, is in the conservation buffer, the hundred-foot buffer. And you're adding to that, you're creating, you're increasing the nonconformity in that area. But it looks as though, and you didn't mention it in your narrative, but it looks as though as you might be using some space in the fifty-foot buffer zone as remediation. And I, I know this has gone to the conservation, I have absolutely no ability to question them, and I know that, you know, they are certainly the subject matter experts on all of this, but if you could just, it looks like you're increasing the nonconformity by also going into the fifty-foot NDC.
Thank you, Sean Riley, tie-in bond, formerly Coastal Engineering. Yes, so they see that as mitigation to offset any of the work that we're doing. So we're actually removing lawn and planting, native planting that in that area to create a greater buffer to the resource area, so they find that to be a positive. The other positive that they found was that we're making a nonconforming house, which is not conforming to the flood hazard codes, compliant with the flood hazard codes by adding flood vents, by elevating all of the utilities, by using flood-resistant materials within the basement. So also, they also found that the septic system, by abandoning the septic systems that's within the hundred-foot buffer and connecting to the town sewer was yet another positive. So we got through their meeting in one meeting because they found that this was a project they could condition for approval. So everything that we're doing as far as the resource areas is a benefit.
Good, all right, thank you for explaining. Good, all right, thank you for explaining that, appreciate it, thank you.
Lee, questions?
Well, most of my questions were answered as well, and I do appreciate the explanation regarding, you know, what, what this separate unit is going to be used for. That was, that was helpful to understand it, because it really does look like a second dwelling. Because as Jenny said, the redundancy of some of the things in the space. So that, that was helpful for me. And also the explanation regarding the height of the main house, the ceilings. I was having, I was having a little bit of a problem with the height of the new seal, roof, but since you explained it, that answered that question too, thank you.
Okay, Dave Nixon, questions?
Well, someone on this board once said, if it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. And he was talking about, you know, two family, looks like a two family, feels like a two family. I know it's, I shouldn't use that word, but with a separate unit. And I heard what you said about the owner needs a place to go to get away from it, great. But to have two dens, two living rooms, two kitchens, two dining rooms, it doesn't make sense to me. That doesn't speak to what you were talking about. So I, I just don't understand how you'd expect us to feel that this is a one family where everything's doubled and you've, you don't have access, except as Chris explained, with the vestibule going from one side to the other. It, it just strikes me as wrong. Secondly, and here I'm more into the comments as opposed to questions, okay? I drove up and down Vineyard Avenue looking at homes like this, and perhaps built at the same time, that had additions put on, maybe a garage and something over it and all that. And I counted eight, and not a one of them was the mass of the addition, anything like this, and not a one of them was the ridge of the addition over the ridge of the house, the main house. So I'm just saying to you, I'm not buying it, I'm not, and you can put that in the comment section or whatever you'd like to do. But I, I could never see myself voting in favor of this, because to me, it's going in the wrong direction.
Thank you. Ed, questions?
Yeah. The, on the interior of the house, is there, there's no connection anywhere on the first or second floor between the existing living room, the new living room, the existing dining room and the new den? Is there, is there?
At the moment, other than the, I'll say vestibule, that's often ether at the moment. Other than, other than that, no, because of the reasons that Chris mentioned, it's because of roof heights. If it was, if it was simple enough to, you know, cut a door through, you know, then they would have. And in fact, you can have, the interesting question about, when you talk about number of dwelling units, there is no law against how many kitchens you can have, or living rooms or dining rooms you can have in a house. You could have three if you want them. The issue is the usability of the structure and how they are connected or not connected. So if this was a more, let's say the floor in, in the garage is at a lower level. So one of the problems with the height here and with the second floor versus the first, or the height in the back versus the height in the front, is that you're dealing with building an addition on a lower garage, in the back, the house is a little bit higher, but it's not as high. So you could make, you could have raised the roof on the back of the house and made them all match, but that's not what they, you know, the owners were intending to do, they were just putting the one and a half story addition on top. To do however what you both were questioning, if you could, if you look in the plans from the existing living room into what was labeled the den on the new plan, if those were at even height, and I'm saying, this is me now, not an architect or an engineer.
Is, are you, is the height of the existing higher or lower?
Lower.
And aren't you going to be demolishing the garage foundation anyways? Because there seems to be plenty of room.
No, no, it's, they're not rebuilding the garage, it's an addition on top of the garage.
But you could easily lo, lower the foundation of the garage to line them up, couldn't you?
So if I can focus you on Reg 10 of my drawings, it's the last page. I think it shows pretty well, because I've shown you dashed lines of the existing first floor ceiling, the existing first floor finish, it's seven foot one half inch, as I'd indicated. The upstairs, by the way, is six foot nine. Not legal by today's codes, not, not even close. So we can't duplicate that to put an addition on. So, so we had to do a different height. What we have, I'm showing the section through the first floor here is an existing floor system. And so that's why we were trying to work with that over the existing garage, the existing with an S in it, terrible spell, it's unite. You know, you'll, you'll see that it would be really difficult to get any connection in, sort of on the southern side of the house, into the addition. So hence why we, you know, came up with the other solution. But it was never desired, again, you know, it was just a separate space for one of the family members to go and spend time. And it's just the connection was not an easy thing to do, given the existing building. You know, we, we could have topped the existing building all the way to the ceiling and done something there, but that would have been far beyond what they were looking to do, they wanted a new space and added space.
I guess if, if I was to see this property online and was looking to rent a property, I would call my buddies and say, hey, listen, is it, here's a two-family to rent, because that's what it looks like. Even if your tent is not, use it as a two-family, if it was ever to be rented, I would think, and advertised as it's displayed here, I think someone would make the same mistake that others are making, that it looks like a two-family. I guess that, that really would be my thoughts on that. The only other questions I have is, it doesn't, there's no flood vents shown in the drawing, but I assume those will go in at some point. And also, the floor plans don't seem to take into consideration where the utilities are going to go, that are now in the basement. I don't see any areas where those are going to be relocated.
We don't get into that at this level, we do that in construction documents.
Okay.
Both of those.
And then, it doesn't look like there's air conditioning in the house now. If air conditioning is going to be added, I would just, there's been a number of issues where people add air conditioning or put condensers in, and they're not outside of the setback, so I just would mention that, that the, any air conditioning or condensers put on the property would have to adhere to the setback regulations and also be elevated out of the floodplain, just because we've seen that mistake made. Yeah, or a generator, seems every property generator also, so.
The three of us have, all have experience with all of those, so, yes.
It's a good point to make though, because we're a little scod from something that happened recently, so. So I'm going to give you my comment, and then you can decide what you want to do. I agree 100% with everything that Mr. Nixon said, and I also think that the, that the house has too much mass. I also am struck by Mr. Tim Tobin's comment. I, I think your client's statements are killing you, Mr. Singer, when he referred, he allegedly referred to it being two units. And I can't really get past that. So would you like a straw vote, or would you like another motion?
I'm not even going to look behind me at the moment, no, if, I think if two of you have clearly said how you're going to vote today, we'd respectfully request a withdraw without prejudice, and we'll go back to the drawing board. Recognizing that what's being proposed here can, if, again, you know, if, if Chris can come up with a way to put a four-foot cased opening between one part and the other part, then it can look the same, and it's clearly, by health codes and by zoning codes and by everything, even with a second kitchen, at that point, it's still a single-family house. So, you know, ju, just for all of you, what's being proposed is not a way to try to look like a duck and be a duck, to Mr. Nixon's point, it's to have the additional space in a way that is also allowed. So, you know, I hear what you're saying, we're not going to push you for a vote today. You know, we will try to regroup on it, but when we come back, i, it's probably going to look fairly similar, but just maybe have a different type of connection, so.
Well, we're not making any promises about anything, so.
No, not asking you to.
So I move to approve the request for a withdrawal or continuance?
Withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay, withdrawal without presence, withdrawal without prejudice of application 24 dash 001.
David, seconds.
Okay, at this point, before we vote on that, would anybody like to make any substantive comments? David?
Excuse me. Yeah, because I, this had me thinking a bit about ADUs. I just would like to comment that this isn't being brought to us as an ADU, but someone in the neighborhood could be coming, seeking an ADU, and we're, we're in some pretty desperate circumstances with respect to the granting of ADUs and things like that. And I, I just, looking at it from that perspective, I, I would like to find a way to have this board be a little less discouraging to doing these kinds of floor arrangements and things, because as they pointed out, and as I thought about with some other, another applications coming in this afternoon, you know, what people want from houses these days is perhaps somewhat different than pre-pandemic in terms of being able to sequester off a part of the house, et cetera, et cetera, for very good reasons. Pandemic had some effects on that. And also, you know, thinking about, I don't have this, this is not an issue for me, but thinking about, you know, in general, families that, that have, people and kids in their twenties and thirties staying, living at home still, you know, continuing circumstances, that this kind of, these kinds of designs can accommodate. And, and also the idea that perhaps when, if someone, if we allow, for whatever reason, someone to succeed with a proposal like this, well, maybe it's going to be easier for them in the future, particularly if the ADU laws get relaxed even further, to convert them to an ADU, and we need those things. So I just want to make that statement, and, and I, I, I've seen this and I've seen it happen, and we seem to be concerned about someone bending the law, et cetera. I think, you know, with the proposal they've offered for the condition about renting and things, I, I would, I would rather see us be a little more generous with some of this, thanks.
So I don't, I just, I don't disagree with you, but this could not be an ADU because it's in the flood zone. So I just wanted to clarify that for anybody.
Is that true, Jay, is that?
Yeah, we do not, the bylaw does not allow for new dwelling units in the conservancy district.
Yeah.
And this is too large to be considered an ADU as well.
Is it, okay, I didn't, you know, measure, yeah, okay.
So they're less aggrieved than they would have been?
Yeah, that's, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, any other comments that anyone would like to make? Nope, okay, so.
Call for a vote.
Call for a vote on the motion, Jenny?
On the motion for a withdrawal.
Correct.
Jenny votes yes.
Steve DeBoer votes yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
David votes yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Application number 24 dash 002, Gary and Susan Harrigan, care of Theodore Streber, 15 Linden Tree Lane, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 22 Bearberry Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 4D Block 64, Lot T2B. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the construction of additions and a deck. The proposed additions and deck conform to road and a butter setback requirements. The existing building coverage is 2,048 square feet, 15.8%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,175 square feet, 16.7%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming in that it contains 14,694 square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protected bylaw.
Mr. Streber, welcome.
Welcome, thank you for your presentation.
My name is Sam Streber, I'm the architect for the Harrigans. They wish to improve the front view of the house. Right, right now, there's a garage doors, big, big garage door, a main house that has regular windows on it, but offers no entrance, and then a breezeway that was so constructed that it has two, two, two patio doors as their front entrance. This space here is used by, by people in the house because it's very close to the kitchen, and it's the sunniest room. But it's just not appropriate, and this ends up being a mudroom for the house, and, and an entry, and a very pleasant one. So if you put the front elevation, the proposed elevation, so the idea is to make an eye-catching gable and try to push your way into a more enjoyable space and to catch your eye right away, so you know where to go. And then, in the, in the floor plan of the first floor, the proposed floor plan, and then, which, which only takes a one-foot addition, a little one-foot addition to, to separate it away from the, the existing bones, and then kind of build away a sitting space that will get some high sunlight from the, above the door, and then these, in the afternoon, will be quite sunny most of the day. And then the deck has seen better days, and the owners would like to build it, rebuild it, because we'd have to do foundations in this area, so there would be a new deck here, and they like to eat out on the deck, so there's place for that. And we would just go short of the setback line for the, for the construction of the new deck. That's an entrance and the sort of cozy family room that's close to the kitchen and the dining room, and open up the connection to the space. So if I can read the criteria, adequacy of the.
Sam, Sam, Mr. Streber, if you'd like, you could forego the criteria on this one, because we did receive your, your, your copy, and we've all read it. Would, would that work for you if you didn't have to read it, because we did read it?
Okay.
Okay, is other members okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right, very good, very good. So at this point, is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? Please indicate. Please indicate.
There's no one to speak in favor.
Seeing none? Okay, I'm going to read the one correspondence, 21424, from the health agent, Judith Giorgio. I have reviewed the plan to add an entryway addition to this property. There will be no increase in septic flow, nor will it encroach on the existing septic system. I have no concerns. Is there anybody that would like to speak against this application here or on Microsoft Teams or has a question? Please indicate. Seeing none? Okay.
Hello? Hello?
Oh, sorry, yes, sir. Could you state your name?
Yes, my name is John Shauer, I live at 39 Uncle Dean's Road. We are on the butter in the back of this property, and I was trying to, to decipher those plans that we just put on the screen. We're, we're mostly concerned about, like, the distancing between our property in the back and whether there, you know, what's going to happen into the back of the property as it, you know, moves, if it moves towards us or closer to us, because right now, noises, I think, between our properties is, is, is pretty clear as it is. So, I, I'm having trouble kind of understanding exactly what the deck will now do and where this addition will be.
Okay, we're going to let the applicant explain.
His concern is that, that the deck, the deck is being built up to the setback line. It, it, it really is just replacing the existing deck. The existing deck has more construction facing him in the way the steps have been done, and we're, we're just making use of the space that we're, we have available for.
Okay, thank you.
The, the deck is smaller than the existing deck.
Right.
Oh, okay, so it will not come out any further? I see. And then, so then I see that the, the addition is actually filling in what was the sliding glass, or that part will be moving into the deck area, but that the actual deck area does not move any further back.
Does the deck area move any further back, Mr. Streber?
Is the deck?
Does the deck area move any further back, closer to this gentleman's property?
Eighteen inches.
Eighteen inches?
Yeah, it is, is, because this, you have to measure from the, the bottom step.
Okay.
For, for the deck, and, and we're just going out to the, where the bottom step is. So there's hardly, it's, it's a few inches.
Okay.
Right, and it's still within the, the legal distance, then.
Correct.
Still within the, yes, still within the legal setback, right?
Okay, hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak against this application or has a question? Please indicate. I see no one else. Okay, questions from the board? Ed?
I have no questions.
Dave Nixon?
No questions.
Dave Veach?
No questions.
Ginny?
Not a question, but I think if I could make a comment, if you wanted to pull up E1 and A1, I think it'll really show the, the neighbor what Sam was saying visually. So E1 is the existing deck, and you can see the 15-foot setback? So that's the existing, and so what Sam was talking about were the steps, or, okay, so it's within the setback, and then if you, so that's the existing, and if you show the new one, A1, I just think it more, it visually answers Sam's question to the neighbor.
Yeah.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Well, thank you.
And so, so you see how now A1, it's still within the setback, it goes back just a tiny bit more because the steps are gone, because they're just on the side.
I see.
And then the house addition is taking up the deck from the interior. I just wanted to show that to you. Okay.
Thank you, thank you for, for doing that. The visual and explanation help together, thanks.
Yeah, got that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yeah, very good. Steve DeBoer, questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I have a request that, and it's not on you, Sam, but if, when you have these proposed drawings and existing drawings, if they could be on the same page, so if you have the, the existing east elevation, have the proposed east elevation on the same page, so that you don't have to flip back and forth between several pages to see what exists now and what, what it's going to be, you can see it right in front of you on one-page paper. It's not you.
Sounds like a good idea.
Not you, but if you could get, get that done, it'd be appreciated.
Take a bigger piece of paper.
Yeah.
Very good, good question. Lee, questions?
No questions.
Okay, and I have no questions. Ginny, can we have a motion to close the hearing and move into deliberations?
Yes, I move to close the hearing and move into deliberation.
Dave Veach, seconds.
Okay, Dave Nixon?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ed, I mean, I'm sorry, Steve?
I vote yes.
And Ginny?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes.
So deliberations. Steve, why don't you go ahead?
I think it's, this is a nice project. I, I certainly think it's going to at least improve the, the streetscape. I'm, I'm not sure if you can really see it from the street, but as you approach the house, it's going to be a much better look than two sliding doors in the, in the front of the house. And, you know, I think that, that, the deck is a nice job, you're, you know, resurfacing, rebuilding it, so I think that's a great idea. It's a nice project. Thank you.
Okay, Lee?
I agree, I think it's a great improvement to the home.
While we're over there, Ginny?
I agree, I think that it's a modest change, 127 square feet of building coverage, it's, meets our criteria, a nice improvement.
Thank you.
Okay, Dave Veach?
Certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and meets all of our applicable criteria, so I would support it.
I'll just second what Dave said.
David Nixon?
I'll third what he said.
And I'll fourth it. So, conditions. Sam, do you have any ideas about conditions?
Frankly, it's at the end of a cul-de-sac, it's got a long driveway where cars could, contractors' cars can fit. He's just gone through some interior construction, and, and it was hardly two or three cars to do the new bathroom inside. So, I, I, I think, you know, we'd be willing to specify the hours and not on the weekend and, and those things, but I think there's no close houses, it seems to me, that, that.
Does, does anybody on the board think we need conditions for this?
Well, I think, I, I, I mean, I agree with Sam, I think, and we, we don't need anything other than our standard.
Standard conditions, okay.
Which, if you want, Ginny, you want to, or you want me, I can do it if, yeah, okay.
Okay, so I move to approve application number 24002 as submitted with the following conditions. All construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on site or, which is fine, or neighboring property with permissioned property owner, and then between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction be allowed, no work permitted.
We don't need that.
We don't need.
We don't, we don't need the exterior construction, we just need the hours.
I should have let you do it.
No, no, no.
No, no, that's the whole, it's the exterior construction that.
All right, so the construction activity between eight and five.
Yeah, so you're just trying to, we're not saying, we're not trying to stop exterior construction during the time period, we're just limiting the hours to.
Right, okay. And weekends?
No weekends and eight to five daily.
Okay.
You happy, Sam?
Yeah, that'll be, so.
All right, very good. Do you want to second that?
I, absolutely.
Okay, Ginny, vote.
Ginny votes yes.
Steve?
Steve votes yes.
Yes.
Veach votes yes.
And as do I, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right. When you're ready, Sarah, next application, 24-003, looks like.
Application number 24-003, 218 Deer Meadow Lane Realty Trust, care of John Riley, 8 West Bay Road, Osterville, Mass. 02655. Owner of property located at 218 Deer Meadow Lane, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, 8J Block 70, Lot C174. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The exist, the proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law Chapter 48, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,686 square feet, 8.8%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,974 square feet, 10.3%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming in that it contains 19,126 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5 of the protective bylaw.
Gentlemen, please state your name for the record. Please state your name for the record and, and go ahead and give your presentation.
John Riley with Riley Construction.
Tim Fisher, homeowner.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. We are seeking permission for a special permit for 218 Deer Meadow Lane for the addition of 288 square feet for a 16-by-18 sunroom off of the back of the house. We have already been granted a building permit for the interior of the home. We have installed a steel beam, remodeling the kitchen, redoing master primary bedroom, and adding a powder room as well.
Okay, we, can you address the conditions, especially the ones that are applicable?
The existing conditions right now, under construction?
The criteria, I'm sorry.
So I was not aware of full criteria needing to be submitted to this, I apologize for that.
That's okay.
I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding criteria.
We can give you a copy?
Okay.
If that works.
I have, I can give mine. You have an extra one?
Yeah, that's great.
Oh, yeah, I have one, Karen.
And if you feel one's not applicable, just read it real quick and.
Just a touch. Eleven, twelve.
So, number 11, visual impact on the neighborhood and neighboring uses of any formula business establishment, no business shall be.
No, she, she, I think you were told, you probably didn't hear, some of them are not applicable.
Okay.
So start at the top.
Got it. So as we have stated in the filing, it, the coverage is below the 15% at 10.3, and we are only adding 288 square foot to the property. So the gable end of the sunroom addition is forming with neighborhood, is fitting with all the architecture, is fitting with the sort of current construction of the area.
Those are the things we need to hear.
Okay. So the extent of proposed increase in non-conforming nature of the structure or use, again, I think we're still below that 15% at 10.3, so that should satisfy item three. So we are thankfully fortunate on this piece of property, we're not in conservation, we're not in a flood zone.
Right.
And for once, it is a nice, beautiful, flat piece of property, so we really don't have any of those issues. Impact of scale, siding and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. Again, this is being built in the back of the home and is not visible from the street. Capability of the proposed use with neighboring uses, it's a sunroom, it's not, we're not adding bedrooms, we're not adding flow, we actually just finished the installation of a new septic system, which was inspected today, so we're not really creating more usable space other than what's existing. Adequacy of method of sewage disposal, as I just mentioned, we have a brand-new system going in, we also have proposed on our site plan, storm drainage with wells. Impact on traffic flow and safety, currently we're doing construction now, everything's fine during the summer. Tim has two sons, they may have friends, I don't think, I don't see a huge impact because we're not adding bedrooms, so real, no ability to sort of bolster the house. Noise and litter, we're being very quiet, courteous, and conscientious during construction, I think Tim will do the same during the summer. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, we have water, gas, and power on site, that's not changing. Visual impact on the neighborhood and neighboring uses, as I said, we don't, it's on the back of the house, we've improved it, we've done new windows, new siding, new roof, we've improved the aesthetics of the home. Okay, so flood plain, we don't, does not apply to us.
Okay, very good.
Sorry about that, folks.
And you're not a formula business, I take it?
No, no, no.
All right, very good. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application or online? Please indicate. Seeing none? I will read the one correspondence from Judith Giorgio, the health agent, delivered on 213 2024. I have reviewed the plan to add a sec, to add, add an addition to this property, there will be no increase in septic flow, however, the septic system must be relocated to provide for the proposed swimming pool. A septic permit has been issued for the new Title V septic system, I have no concerns at this time. Now, anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak against this application or has a specific question? Attorney Litchfield?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Diane Bronson, who has since 1971 lived in the small house at the, immediately at the rear of this property, at 287 Training Field Road. I should say a couple of things by way of brief introduction. I had not expected to be here this afternoon, particularly for a Bjorkland hearing, where what is proposed conforms, excuse me, and I'm not strictly here in opposition to the proposal. In fact, I had hoped that my client's could, concerns could be resolved, but that turned out not to be the case. Mrs. Bronson came to see me to express some concerns about the proximity of the swimming pool to her home, and the loss of the vegetative screening at the rear of the property for which had, had decades provided privacy. Sarah, if you could bring up A41, please, not sure where it is in your list, but that's the, one of the renderings, it's, A41 is the, the, no, not quite there yet, but we'll get there. As a structure, a pool has to, there we go, thank you, the top right is the view from Mrs. Bronson's home. As a structure, the pool has to, and does meet the 25-foot setback, but the proposed surround patio, or whatever you want to call it, under our bylaws interpretation, can be much closer to the lot line, in fact, it will be much closer to her. As you know, the considerations, the criteria include noise, light, and impact, the neighborhood properties, all of those are required considerations, and Mrs. Bronson has some concern there. As you know, a number of properties in Chatham, when renovated or improved, often become rental properties. Now, I understand that there's no intent here that it become a rental, but with a pool, it would certainly be of interest to renters, and of course, the special permit, which would include the swimming pool, goes with the property regardless of the ownership. So I contacted Mr. Riley, the applicant's representative, last week, and he put me in touch with Mr. Fisher, the homeowner, I explained Mrs. Bronson's concerns to Mr. Fisher, and suggested that for the benefit of both neighbors, a vegetative buffer screen should be placed along the lot line. When you went out there, you doubtless saw a row or a group of evergreens in the rear of this property, those will unfortunately be cut down to make room for the pool, and I had suggested to Mr. Fisher that something similar could be planted along the property line. I pointed out that the plans show, one of the renderings, one of the plans, actually, site plan says to be updated by others, because there's some representation of plan, of plantings, but it just says on them to be updated by others. I understood Mr. Fisher to indicate he'd give us some consideration, not having heard from him, I contacted him again yesterday, and heard from him last evening, and he told me that they hadn't made a decision on plantings, so the updating is going to be part of my request, the updating by others, I would ask of the zoning board of appeals, consider that in addition to the standard prohibition on exterior construction during the summer, which I hope you would impose, that if you approve this request, that you add a condition requiring the creation of a substantial vegetative buffer strip, perhaps six feet wide, along the westerly property line. If you look at sheet A23, Sarah, that would, it may not, I think you know what I'm talking about, but the, there is, that was A24, it's A23, there is shown a rendering, there we go, at the bottom, of what will be visible from Mrs. Bronson's backyard, and we would see. backyard, and we would simply request that if the fences of that sort, or whatever fence is designed, that the vegetative screen be on the westerly side of the fencing. The pool wasn't advertised, but it's plainly a structure, and certainly an intensification of what's proposed to be added to the property. The site may be under an interpretation of the bylaw, which excludes patios from setback, setbacks, be adequate for the pool, but with a patio, but with a patio and without a vegetative screen, what is proposed frankly is perhaps not strictly compatible, at least from my client's perspective, and as you know, name, impact on neighboring properties and vegetation are also mandatory criteria. Without a vegetative screen, I think it could have a detrimental effect. As I said, I would prefer not to be here, but we would request that condition. The bylaw says that you may, rather you must, at a minimum, consider the specifically enumerated criteria, but it also says that you should, and you may, and I think should, consider other factors, the factors which are set forth in the statement of purpose and intent of the bylaw, which include the welfare and quality of life of our citizens.
Mr. Litchfield, I despise doing this to you, of all people, but you have...
Am I up to five minutes? Thank you, and I will end.
Seven seconds left.
It is a reasonable condition, and one which I had hoped would be agreed to, but since that didn't occur, I would respectfully request that you require it as a condition of approval, and I thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak against this application, or has a specific question, either here or on Microsoft Teams? If so, please indicate. Anybody? Nope? Questions from the board? Steve DeBoer?
I guess my first question is, I just need a little clarification, are we discussing just the bump out today?
That's correct.
Or are we discussing the pool?
Just the...
So that's going to be made under a separate application?
That's correct, yes.
So we can deal with that?
The pools as of, as of right?
The pool conforms to all the required setbacks for the zoning district, so it does not need relief from the board of appeals.
It doesn't need to come back, okay. Okay, so I, okay, so then answers that question, because I was a little confused, because I didn't see a mention of a pool anywhere in your narrative, but I see it all through the drawings. I don't have a problem with the bump out, I think it's a nice addition, I don't think you'd be able to see from the house, the ridge is, is under the ridge of the existing house, so I think it's well hidden from the street. I would like to consider Mr. Litchfield's request for some kind of a buffer between the properties, pools can be noisy, even if there's just a few people there, so I would like us to consider that, as long as you're willing to take that on.
There, there, there's no decision made on what that buffer is going to be, but there will a hundred percent be a buffer. I am as interested as my neighbor in privacy, and in the interest of being a good neighbor, I certainly want to have some trees there. There's no intention to cut those trees down that are there, they're just, the intent is probably to move them back and supplement them with more of them.
Okay, 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 well, other than that, I think it's a nice addition.
This is just questions, so...
Yeah, I, I don't think I have any other questions, I think I can see what you're doing here quite well, thank you.
All right, Dave Veach, questions?
No, I, I don't. So there, there is, there's some vegetation there, that I didn't pay close enough attention when I was out there, I wasn't thinking about, and what you're proposing is to move that vegetation?
Correct.
At least, and perhaps augment it if need be.
Supplement.
Yeah, okay, I don't have any other questions.
Ed, questions?
I guess just the one question I have is, I noticed when I went out to the site and on the plans, that there's a overhang on the front step, but I don't see it on the site plan. So I'm just wondering if that needs to be on the site plan, I see step, and if that's been taken into your calculations.
There's an existing step there, which we're covering currently, but that, I mean, if it's a nonpermeable surface, which it is existing, maybe it wasn't calculated on the site map, I'm not a hundred percent sure, it's small, I believe it's seven by five, so I don't think, I think we would still be...
Are we talking about the step or the portico?
The portico.
The portico.
Okay.
Jade, I think you, we do have to account for that, correct?
Any roofed area would be counted towards building coverage, that's correct.
Does, Jay, if you would, does, I'm just going to ask a building instructor, building commissioner a question, does this affect the advertisement?
It probably would, yeah, if it wasn't accounted for in the calculations.
It, it, it does say walk steps, a hundred and forty square feet, I'm just, do you know if that includes the portico?
The portico covers that step.
This property is located in a water resource protection district, so they're required, in addition to giving us building coverage, they also need to give us site coverage, because if they are in excess of, I believe it's fifteen or twenty-five percent, but I do know it's twenty-five hundred square feet, they need to provide dry wells or some sort of drainage attenuation for stormwater runoff.
Which we will be doing, we have dry wells.
But the easy answer there is, I don't know, beyond the shadow of a doubt, if the portico is included in the building coverage calculation or not.
Do you think, sir, that you'd be able to come back in a few minutes and have that answer for us, if we stepped it back?
I think, I think it's probably not in there. How big is the portico? I was going to walk some steps, a hundred and seventy-one. So I think it's taken proposed, walks and steps, one seventy-one.
So the, the ads goes from... Add is, is showing, it's nineteen seventy-four, oops.
That's the back too, though. That's the walkway.
Is the proposal minus the existing of sixteen eighty-sixth, that's, I hit the wrong button somewhere. All right, so nineteen seventy-four minus...
Let me just, does the applicant have any answer, by any chance?
That's two hundred and eighty-eight square feet, and the, the sunroom is eighteen by eighteen?
Sixteen by eighteen.
Sixteen by eighteen, so... I'm not skilled at using my calculator, so let me just, so sixteen by eighteen is two hundred and eighty-eight square feet, so no, it does not include the portico, the ad doesn't include the portico.
So if we say the portico is...
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five square feet?
Yep.
It gets added to that.
So it won't, I mean, won't take it over the percentage allowed?
I think it needs to be re-advertised.
This would be up to the building commissioner to determine, case law says that an increase in habitable space on a nonconforming lot requires the grant of a special permit, that's what they're before the board for. The proposed portico will comply with the, I believe it will comply with the required setback of forty feet for the R sixty zoning district, so it would be whatever the building commissioner determines if it's necessary for them to re-advertise or not.
What do you, what say you, Mr. Building Commissioner?
Mr. Building Commissioner would say thirty-five square feet is inconsequential, fifteen percent is the maximum allowed building coverage, and they're only at ten point three percent.
So you're satisfied?
I think I'm okay with it.
Very good, because you can't live in a portico, is that, unless you're a robin or...
Squirrel.
Squirrel, yeah. Okay, is that, where are we now? Questions, David Nixon, questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Ginny, did you ask questions yet?
No. So I want to go back to something Mr. Litchfield said about, I understand the pool is, is, as right, and it's just proposed here, so we didn't really take that into consideration when we looked at it. Is, Mr. Litchfield, are you saying that, I think you said, you were making comments about it, were you saying that the pool, proposed pool should be considered as part of the overall plan that we have before us?
Clearly, it is part of the overall plan before you, my, and I didn't write the legal ad to the application, my understanding is that we're here under Bjorkland case, where we have a lot which is nonconforming, we're proposing to make a substantial alteration, i.e. the addition of the room at the rear. Because under our bylaw, a swimming pool is a structure, I think the addition, and swimming pool is certainly a substantial alteration, my own thought is that it should have been included in the legal ad, but I'm aware of it, the world is aware of it, you're aware of it, so from a legal perspective, I don't particularly have a problem with it, however, it is plainly a part of this application, so I think it has to be considered as a part of it.
Okay, thank you. So a question for the owner, you mentioned that plantings were always in the plan.
Correct.
So I'm not sure what the concern is of the neighbor, has it just not been communicated?
I don't know.
Okay, so, is there, okay, so you have said that then at our hearing on the record, that you planned...
That's correct. I spoke to Mr. Litchfield, we talked about what those plantings are, are undetermined.
Okay, and what you're removing is undetermined at this point?
The five, there are five green giant trees there, that my intention is to move them back and supplement them with more of them to create the buffer, we just haven't done that design yet.
Okay, and is the, the rendering showed the fence, is the fencing required?
The intention is that the pool has, can have a safety cover, in which case the fence is not required, however, I think in, in my mind, I think I do want the fence, I just haven't decided whether we'll do that yet.
Okay, just because the rendering showed a fence, and we were talking about the plantings being on the western side of the fence, so, okay, that's all I have.
Lee, questions?
No questions.
And I have no questions. Can we have a motion to close the hearing, Ginny, and move into deliberations?
I'll move to close the hearing and move to deliberation.
Dave Veach, seconds.
Okay, Ginny?
Um, I believe...
No, no, yes, we're voting.
Yes, Ginny says yes.
I vote to approve.
No, you vote to close the hearing.
Close the hearing, yes, yes.
Dave Nixon?
Yes. Victorious, yes.
And I vote, yes, now we'll do deliberations, and Ginny, since you started, go ahead.
I could be fired for going to a motion. No. So when you look at, you meet, you meet the criteria, I think it's a really beautiful, I'm amazed you can do so much without changing the front, except for the portico, practically at all, it looks really like a very nice plan, but I do have, I do listen to what Mr. Litchfield has brought up about the neighbor, and it sounds like it shouldn't be an issue, but maybe it's, you know, just to condition that or something.
We might be able to address that during conditions?
Yeah.
Does that work?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Steve, your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think I have the same thing, you know, the addition is very nice, but if we can just work things out with the neighbors, that would make it perfect.
We'll, we'll work on conditions, okay, Lee?
I agree with my colleagues, I think it looks like a great project, it's certainly busy over there right now, but I think when it's finished, it's going to be great.
Dave Veach?
Yeah, I, I think with addressing with conditions about the screening, we can ensure that this will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Ed, your thoughts?
No, I was out there today, it looks, looks beautiful, I liked the portico, wasn't trying to derail you at all or anything, just wanted to make sure it was accounted for, I think it'll be a nice project, thank you.
And Dave Nixon?
Well, I, I would be in favor of it, with the condition as outlined by Mr. Litchfield, I think, in Mr. Riley's presentation, he mentioned that Mr. Fisher has two sons who might come down with friends and all that, well, that's a noise issue to me, and we need to protect the neighbor best we can.
Understood, we've owned this house for several years, the deck that exists now is where the addition goes, that's where we're, that's where we're out in the evenings and the afternoons, so there really is the exact same people that were there the last five years that'll be there in the future.
Okay, thank you, we're going to vote now?
Understood.
And we're going to impose conditions, so...
Okay, so I move to approve the application twenty-four dash zero zero three with the following conditions. That we, that there's plantings, adequate screening, or how specific do we need to be?
You said you're going to, you're going to move the trees?
Move five trees.
You're going to move five trees and add more?
Add more.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan, does anybody else want to hear?
Well, I think it needs to be a little more specific in what Mr. Litchfield wrote out, I think would be what we would want from a legal standpoint, so if Mr. Litchfield could hand that to Ms. Fenwick, that would be...
Maybe he can just deliver it orally.
Or whisper in her ear, whatever.
Thank you, there was not a writing, but I think it spoke to a substantial vegetative screen at least six feet in width, we certainly appreciate the suggestion of transplanting the, the evergreens that are there now, trees of a similar style, i.e. evergreens, would I think be appropriate for both neighbors. Similar style and size. Yeah, similar size and style.
Very good.
That, that I think should work, and we recognize that, you know, a four-foot tree, maybe a five-foot tree, we want to be neighbors, and Jay doesn't want to hear from us about the height of the trees, but as long as the intent, the intent is followed, I think we'll be fine with that.
Sounds like a, like a plan, so, other conditions, the usual...
Yeah, what about the other?
The other, usual conditions?
I don't, I, I don't think that, given where we are, I don't think that we need to put the ex, the exterior summer construction prohibition in place in this case, I don't...
I agree, does anybody have a problem with that?
No, just the standard...
Just, just the timing of work during the summer, and the, the other about, you know, onsite.
Hours, timing.
Yeah.
Okay, so I move to approve application twenty-four dash zero zero three with the following conditions, the, there's substantial vegetation of at least six feet in width, similar size and style plantings.
Can I speak?
Were you going to say six feet in height?
No, no, I think he was implying six feet in width, those current trees are all, if they're, they're probably four feet, but they're, there'll be many of them staggered and blocking entirely the view of the home, they're currently about ten feet tall, I don't know that I want to be restricted to have something that is six feet around.
It's not six...
I don't think you're talking with Litchfield about something being six feet around.
Okay, we're talking six feet tall. No, actually, if I could, thank you.
Please.
A six-foot strip along the westerly property line, a width of six feet.
Oh, that's what I...
With, the height, I think they will grow, but we're talking about a, a vegetative buffer strip, six feet in width, this is the sort of thing we usually talk about at Conservation Commission rather than ZBA, but a vegetative strip is what we're talking about.
So the motion is going to be that we have a vegetated strip of six feet and, yeah, and with, along the westerly side?
And that all construction activity and vehicles...
And that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or on neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, and construction activity between eight AM and five PM only.
And this is, this during the summer, during, from June thirtieth to Labor Day, no work should be permitted on the weekends, construction activity between eight AM and five PM only.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
And let's vote, Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Steve?
I would vote yes.
David Nixon?
Yes, Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That was easy. All right, yep, ready to have a session? Have you ready, Sarah, next application?
Application number twenty-four dash zero zero four, Richard and Margaret Diary, care of Thad's Masco, six ninety-three Main Street, Chatham, Mass. zero two six three three. Owners of property located at two oh two North Skyline Drive, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, eleven H, block nine, lot H seventy-one. The applicant seeks to enlarge standard change in conforming dwelling in a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition and roof deck. The existing dwelling and proposed addition and roof deck will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of... dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration. And under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 3,280 square feet, 9.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,410 square feet, 10%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 34,200 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5, be of protective bylaw.
Mr. Samasco, welcome.
Good afternoon. Filling in for Thad Samasco, my name's Sean Henry with SVP Design, representing the owners at 202 North Skyline Drive. We're here seeking a special permit, as mentioned. The existing site is nonconforming in that it contains 34,200, where 60,000 is required. The existing building is conforming, as mentioned, and our proposed addition is conforming as well. The proposed addition is a two-story addition off of the south side of the building with a deck attached, as well as a roof deck, as mentioned. And we are showing a dog run that is essentially a fenced-in area, but it, it has a, we're proposing to have a chain link sort of top on it to protect the dog while it's in there. On the first floor, the proposed addition extends the garage, shown here, for long-term car storage, showing the stairs up to the deck with the rinse station below. On the second floor, there's a bedroom that is being moved into the addition space where the existing bedroom two currently is. We're proposing an entertainment room. So you have to go through the entertainment room into the new location of bedroom two. If you go to the next slide, so this is the roof. We're planning to site the roof deck into the existing roof structure in some portions, cutting into that to lessen the proposed mass, keeping the mass down of the proposed addition. We'd be accessing that through an existing space there with the addition of a door. Looking at the criteria, we think that the size of the structure with the proposed additions is compatible with that of the existing structure here, as well as the neighboring buildings. From the street, you will really only see the top rail that we're adding for the roof And then the, as shown at the top there, the, the addition off the side or off the back, I don't think will impact, negatively impact the neighborhood. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any other criteria you think are applicable?
I do not think so, no.
Okay, so, is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? Please indicate. Seeing none? Okay, I will read the correspondence. This is from Judith Giorgio, the health agent, on 21424. I have reviewed the plan to add an addition to this property. There will be no increase in septic flow, nor will it encroach in the, on the existing shared 1A septic system. The property was approved for five bedrooms. When it was constructed, I have no concerns. Then there's a note from Kevin Downey of 230 North Skyline Drive from February 20th, 2024, as in a butter. And as it pertains to this application about the roof deck, my wife Christine and I support the approval of the special permit. Then there is a note from Barbara Holton of 215 North Skyline Drive from February 15th, 2024. I'm writing in support of the application by Rick and Maggie Ferry. Their home is diagonally across the street from my house. They are both lovely neighbors, and I understand their need to make some changes to their home. There's no reason why this application should not be granted. Then there's a note from Chris DuVille from 24 North Skyline Drive, this, let's see, February 15th, 2024. This letter is to express support for the application. The property located at 202 North Skyline Drive, our home is located directly behind the proposed addition, for which my wife and I support the approval of the special permit and construction of the project. That concludes the correspondence. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak against this application or has a specific question? If so, please indicate. Seeing none? Questions from the board? Ed?
I have no questions.
David?
Well, it's sort of a question, but it's a statement, too. I, I'm, I would venture that from the street that you won't even have anything close to what the elevation drawing shows of the peak of that roof deck. I don't think you'll even, would even see it from the street at all, so on.
Okay. David Nixon, question?
No questions.
Ginny, questions?
No questions.
Steve?
I have a couple of questions. The, the garage, it's being called the garage, is relatively small. I think the dimensions are 12 by 15. So I'm not sure if it's actually a garage, but there, is there, there's no driveway access to it? It's all through the existing garage?
Correct.
Is there a path or anything to it?
The garage would be accessed from inside the current garage.
Okay. Okay. And then you mentioned somewhere on, oh, one of the drawings, that the rinse station was gonna be either removed or relocated.
Correct. Yeah, there's an existing rinse station that would be demoed, and this new rinse station would be rebuilt underneath the deck.
Okay. Okay. I have no other questions.
Lee, questions?
No questions.
And I have no questions. Can we have a motion?
I move to close the hearing and move to deliberation.
David, seconds.
Ginny?
Ginny says yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lee? Oh, me, yes.
Yes. David votes yes.
Okay, deliberations. David Nixon?
This seems fine to me. I see no reason not to believe that this is a relatively simple thing. Is it downtown middle of the neighborhood? No. And it's interesting, the only people who can see this have the three patios or four patios around it. Nobody rode in? I guess they're caught with it too, so.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Ed, deliberations?
Uh, no, I, I'm fine with it. It was, first time I've ever been up there. It's amazing, the elevation. You should maybe run up there, get some hillwork.
David?
Yeah, this one might be about the highest point. I'm not sure. Kind of could put a water tower up there. No, this, this certainly meets all of our criteria. It's not substantially more detrimental neighborhood, and I'll support it.
Ginny?
Yeah, I agree with Dave Nixon. I think the neighbor feedback was important because to Dave Veach's point, you can't see anything from the road, and everything's really from the back, and the neighbors were fine with it. It's a stunning view. And I, 130 square feet change, small gross floor area change, love the dog run, and I would support it.
Okay.
I, I think it's a good project. It's, it's well-hidden from, from the street. I don't think it has an effect on anyone.
And Lee?
I agree with all previous comments.
As do I. Conditions? Does anybody think we need to have any conditions?
I can't believe that we need to condition this at all.
At all?
No.
Okay. That sounds good to me. Anybody else?
No conditions, David?
No conditions. I should wanna put some on you.
No, I just wanna make sure, because sometimes we say no, and then it's like, wait a minute.
Any sense of the timeline?
I'm just trying to keep you, keep you on your toes, Ginny.
This is challenging.
Motion to approve it as, as presented?
Yes, I move to approve the application number 24-004, as submitted.
And David, seconds.
Okay, Ginny? Steve?
Ginny votes yes.
Steve DeBoer votes yes.
David Nixon?
Yes. David Veach votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Great, thank you.
And whenever you're ready, Sarah, we'll go to the Surrey Lane.
Application number 24-006, Lee McCarty, McCarty and Adam Milsum, care of Thad Samasco, 693 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 6 Surrey Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 14F Block 31, Lot ME11A. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a conforming dwelling and a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling and proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration. And under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,737 square feet, 11.9%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,932 square feet, 13.3%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains a dwelling and a guest house, and contains 14,533 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5, be of protective bylaw.
Sarah, welcome back.
Thank you. Still not Thad Samasco.
Okay.
So this application for a special permit is for a small 195 square feet dining room addition off the west of the house. The existing house is conforming. This addition keeps it conforming. The existing materials are, the proposed materials are to match existing. With the criteria, I think it is pretty much the same as the last one, compatibility of size of structure with neighboring properties. Think this addition works with the existing architecture of the house and the neighboring buildings, impact of scale, siding mass on neighboring visual character. This shingle-style house is, is sort of seen all over the neighborhood. We think that the details match the existing house and neighboring houses, and don't think that it's gonna impact any neighboring views.
Okay, very good. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate. Seeing none? I will read the one correspondence from the health agent, Judith Giorgio, from 213, 2024. I have reviewed the plan to add an addition to this property. There will be no increase in septic flow, nor will it encroach on the existing septic system. I have no concerns. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak against this application or has a specific question? If so, please indicate. Seeing none? Questions from the board? Lee?
No questions.
Steve?
I have no questions.
Ginny?
No questions.
David Veach?
No questions.
Ed Atkins?
No questions.
And David Nixon? Nor do I. Okay, can I have a motion to move into deliberations and close the hearing?
Yeah, I move to close the hearing and move to deliberation.
David, seconds.
Ginny?
Ginny says yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Veach says yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Ginny?
Well, it may technically be a substantial alteration, but I don't see how it's substantially detrimental. So, no, it's a very nice addition. It fits nicely on the lot, and I would support it.
David Veach?
I totally agree. It's a nice addition, not substantially more detrimental neighborhood at all.
Ed?
Yeah, when I first pulled up to the house, I thought it was historic, and it's a beautiful spot, beautiful house, and I think the addition fits perfectly.
All right, thank you.
Meets all our criteria.
And Lee?
I agree. 195 square feet, it's gonna be great.
Steve?
Very nice addition.
And I agree as well. Conditions on this one? Anybody?
No.
I don't think, you know, it's pretty small.
Okay, no conditions? Does that work for you?
Great, yep.
Okay, very good, very good. So, let's take a vote to move.
I move to approve application number 24-006, as submitted, with no conditions.
And David, seconds.
Okay, Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Steve?
Steve votes yes.
Ed?
Yes. Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Channel 8, if we could. Just five minutes. Okay, we are back. We are back. Next, the application.
Application number 24-007, Barcliff Properties LLC, care of Rick Howard, 405 Queen Anne Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Owner of property located at 172 Barcliff Avenue, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 15G Block 23, Lot K1. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing garage, installation of a new foundation, and construction of additions. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 19.4 feet from Barcliff Avenue and 24.1 feet from Mousehole Lane. The existing garage is non-conforming in that it is located 31.4 feet from Mousehole Lane. The proposed addition will be non-conforming in that it will be located 23.8 feet from Mousehole Lane where a 40-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,050 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,469 square feet, where 3,000 square feet is maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming in that it contains 27,354 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Howard, I presume?
No, I'm Todd Murphy, I'm representing Marty McDonald.
Okay. Mr. Howard's in the audience. Okay, go ahead, please.
So proposing to add an addition to 172 Barcliff and keep a portion of the home that's out front, and also do a demo on a portion of the house. And so, we're, we're looking to add on, because I know it's not, it's non-conforming, but we're looking to add the addition off the back, which is the 24.1 feet, we're, we're just going to extend that back four feet, which brought it a little bit closer, like four, a little bit over four inches, more closer to Mousehole Lane, and then we're going to move the garage closer to Mousehole Lane, making it 27.1 feet. The, the house meets, is under the maximum coverage of the property. And I believe the house actually will fit into the neighborhood. I don't think it is the largest house in the neighborhood, or will be the largest house in the neighborhood, but I think it fits nicely into the neighborhood. And as you look from Barcliff, from the front, you can see that the front will not change, and the left side won't change either, but just the right side will grow out 10 feet, and you'll see, but that will, that won't really, you know, affect the size of the house, or the view from the front of the house. So it'll all look somewhat the same, other than that 10 feet growing out to the right. As you go down Mousehole Lane, it's A4. Mousehole Lane, the view from Mousehole Lane, the crossway is 185 and the one back, I don't know the number, I think it's 15, but they call it, it's mousetrap. The view from there will, they'll see that we wanted to match the front, making it 24 feet, and then we're going to, we wanted to add a link building between the, that building into the garage, and I think aesthetically it'll look nicer than what's there today, with the louver porch and the flat roof, and then the garage that's detached now. So I think I said it doesn't exceed the proposed, the proposal that we're putting out doesn't exceed the lot size and the structure is suitable to the site. And so the lot out there is relatively flat, actually it sits a little bit lower to, to the street in the front, and so there will be no runoff, it doesn't affect anything in the wetlands. The house that exists now is five-bedroom, and that will stay five-bedroom, the septic is five-bedroom, and that will also stay the same. The impact to Barcliff traffic, the driveway will stay the same down Mousehole Lane, and there'll be really no impact to, to that street or to Mousehole. And the utilities are, they do run down, they do run down Mousehole Lane, and then there's power coming in from Barcliff, and that will, that will stay the same. And so, to the elevation of the house, the elevation on, on the house is going to stay the same, it's just over 29 feet, and that will, the house will continue, and the addition will continue to stay the same height all the way across the roof, ridge. Any questions?
We'll get to that. All right, is that your presentation?
Yep, for now.
Okay, very good.
For now, yep.
All right, thank you. So is there anybody here that has, that would like to speak in favor of this application, either here or on Microsoft Teams? If so, please indicate. Seeing none, I will read the correspondence. We have a letter from the Conservation Commission on February 6, 2024, actually, it's. I'm sorry, historic. Thursday, February 15, 2024 is dated. On February 6, 2024, the Chatham Historic Commission found 172 Barcliff Avenue historically significant, but the proposed changes did not materially diminish the home's historic significance, so they did not impose a demolition delay. And we have a note from Judith Giorgio, the health agent, from 214, 2024. I have reviewed the plan to add an addition and attach garage to this property. The property was approved, was approved and septic installed for the existing five-bedroom property. No additional flow is proposed. I have no concerns. Then we have a letter from Tom Harrington, 24 Beach Plum Way in Chatham, from Tuesday, February 13, 2024. Thank you for the opportunity to connect on the proposed enlargement of 172 Barcliff. Over the past several years, our Barcliff neighborhood has become a daily cacophony of reconstruction. And then he lists the different addresses where there's been construction, 150, 172, 175, 184, 185, 200, 209, and 233. With the face of the neighborhood rapidly changing, just a few months ago, the board expressed reservation with the scale of the reconstruction plan for the neighboring 184 Barcliff. That makes consideration of this proposed enlargement somewhat surprising. I have, I believe that the immediate abutters are best heard with regard to what impact the proposed design and scale will have on the properties, but as a nearby neighbor, I'm concerned with the potential for the proposed scale of the five-bedroom, five baths, three living rooms, two studies, dens, two laundries, a gym, and a pool to be used for rental purposes. As we have seen elsewhere on Barcliff, such properties are used as a seasonal rental, with noise and particularly parking safety issues quickly follow. Rental rates such that the multiple renters join together in order to reasonably afford multiple vehicles that overflow and limited parking pose safety issues along the side of the road. As an example, there have been times when double-digit vehicles have been involved at 150 Barcliff, walkers maneuver around parked vehicles, construction service, seasonal visitors while moving vehicles maneuver around those walkers and parked vehicles. As a minimum, therefore, I believe rental and parking restrictions need to be considered and addressed. Thanks again for the opportunity to comment. And that concludes the correspondence. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application, or has a question? Ma'am? Yep, okay. You're going to go together or one at a time?
One at a time.
Okay. So one person can go up at a time then, if you're going to be separate and distinct. Just state your name, sir, if you would.
Yes. Good afternoon, madam chairwoman and members of the board, Robert Giggly. I reside at 15 Mousehole Lane, I'm director butter to, to the 172 Barcliff property. Mousehole Lane, as you know, is a quaint little private right-of-way, and my front yard looks directly into 172's side yard. And it also looks directly into the garage that's in question. And may I add that this whole Barcliff area is kind of a very historic neighborhood, and I agree with the comment that came from one of the abutters that you just read. Has previously stated, Mr. McDonald's lot is a pre-existing non-conforming lot that he is requesting to make even more non-conforming by demolishing his existing garage and moving it almost four feet closer to Mousehole Lane, and four feet closer to my front yard. His existing single-story garage is approximately 31.4 feet from Mousehole Lane that requires a 40-foot setback, and he wants to construct a new two-story garage to accommodate potentially a second dwelling unit, an apartment, or suite above the garage at a distance of 27.7 feet from Mousehole. That, to me, is a tremendous overreach. There's plenty of land area on his lot that can accommodate his garage without having to burden us with this two-story building, making the lot even more non-conforming. By example, when my house was built, I had to conform to the 40-foot setback in keeping with the bylaw. I'm not asking Mr. McDonald to, to hold to that same requirement, but I would request that he not encroach any closer than he already is. Another note, Mr. McDonald, four to five years ago, started the installation of an in-ground swimming pool, measuring approximately 60 feet long by 15 feet wide by eight feet deep. The gunite structure was placed in the summer of either 2019 or 2020, and the pool and yard have been left unfinished and in a dangerous state since then. I have four grandchildren and another on the way. Kids being kids, if they or anyone else would ever roam into Mr. McDonald's backyard, there would be no secure fence to protect them from approaching the edge of the unprotected concrete pool shell and falling eight feet to a solid concrete floor, some of it holding muddy water. He indicated he has no plans on finishing the pool until the house is complete. If the house takes as long as the pool, who knows when that might be. We've been patient, but to start another project requiring an excavation, new full-depth foundation, equipment, trucks, noise, dust, et cetera, and not have the property protected is posing a considerable hazard and an unsightly existence for the neighborhood. There was a, I'm in the construction business, and whenever we make an excavation, we're bound by Jackie's law. In this pool, I don't know if it falls directly into Jackie's law, but I don't know that there would be a need to potentially have another lot to protect an excavation from what could be a tragic outcome. Finally, a review of the town's permitting website shows 11 active permits, four of which date to 2023, one to 2020, and two date back to 2013. In closing, I respectfully request that the petition for moving the garage closer to Mousehole Lane be denied and a permit for new construction be delayed until the pool is completed and secured. I also have some reservations about the magnitude of the design of the structure as it faces Mousehole Lane. As you can see from the architect's rendering, that elevation really creates a huge barrier that we on Mousehole Lane have to look at every day that we visit, every day that we sit on our front porch. And I would respectfully request that that be brought down into the architectural value of the neighborhood itself. So with that, I thank you for your consideration, and hopefully I can answer any questions, more than happy to do so.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Ma'am, please state your name when you get up there, and there's a five-minute clock, just as you know, right?
Hi, my name is Diane Rollings, and I am the one, almost one of the only year-round residents at the end of Mousehole Lane. My concern is moving the garage closer to Mousehole Lane, is it going to leave enough space for, say, a full-size pickup truck, which I've seen over there many times, to park without the rear end sticking out into Mousehole Lane? Mousehole Lane is a very, very small, little tiny road, and I'm concerned about traffic or parked vehicles being hung over into Mousehole Lane. The only way to get around would be going over their beautifully manicured lawn, so we don't want that. And also, the whole Barcliff, and I know this gentleman who wrote in mentioned that, but last summer, or last year, 185 and 209 Barcliff were remodeled. It was a mess. Every single day, you went down Barcliff, and it was almost like a one-way road because both of those locations were on the same side of the road, and there was pickup truck after, cement truck after, there was, I mean, just everything. One time, I actually did call the police because they just dumped a humongous tractor-trailer dumpster on the road, and it was there for like hours. So these are the things that have happened in the neighborhood, but that is my one concern about that being moved back. It is, it's very frustrating to try to leave your house to go shopping, and you have to wait, or beep your horn and wait for somebody to go out and move a vehicle. And it's already happened on Mousehole Lane, so that's, that's my concern. And another thing is, the damage to the road, that's a private road. If it gets damaged, the town's not going to fix it. So with all this construction, even though this house's address is on 184 Barcliff, they use Mousehole Lane as their entrance to the house. So with all the cement trucks and all the other equipment, if that damages the road, who's going to pay for the repair? I know the town's not going to. And I, I live on that road, and I don't think it should be my, my responsibility either. So those are the, my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wait till you get up to the mic, if you would.
Thank you.
And state your name.
Yes, thank you. My name is Charlene Giggly. It's my husband, Bob. We live on Mousehole Lane, and if you've done a site visit and you go down Mousehole Lane, we're on the left-hand side. We have the mouse pad and mousetrap, and we just, you know, love the neighborhood, and what attracted us to that neighborhood was this beautiful little country road called Mousehole Lane that was just very sweet and endearing, and it just had a great feel to it. One of my concerns is with this new addition is, it's more massive. The mass of this area is going to be a lot larger than it is presently. Two stories, and now wanting to encroach on Mousehole Lane, it's, you know, really going to impact the look, the feel, and, you know, sort of the quality of the neighborhood with all that. And I just think that that's an important, something important to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak against this application or has a specific question anywhere? Anybody else wish to speak against this application or has a specific question anywhere? Nope? Okay, seeing none. Questions from the board? Dave Veach?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The front elevation drawing on A3 seems to me to show a, it looks like pergola and deck under it extending off of the sunroom on the east or southeast side. Is that, and it doesn't show on any of the other drawings, so I'm wondering about that. It doesn't show on the site plan either.
Oh, that was just a, it's a shower stall.
That's where the hand is indicating on there? That's an awfully large shower stall.
Yeah, that's a shower stall. Yeah, yeah, it's...
Where...that's not indicated on the site plan either.
I've gained on this page?
Yeah.
It's right there.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right, great. And then, secondly, and I thought it was kind of unusual on the drawing, but I noticed it's, the existing garage has the windows and doors on the side of the garage, it's kind of an interesting treatment. Do you have any explanation for that?
Yeah, so Marty, that was Marty's thought, and if you go to the site, the site plan, yeah, yeah. So Marty's thought was, because he has extended his family's growing, his sisters, and they're gonna, they come up, they have been coming up for the summer, but they're gonna continue to come up, and he wants them to come up more, but they've kind of overgrown the house, you know, with, you know, what he has there. So, his thought was, because he used to be a swimmer, and he, the kitchen's here, and so he wants to stand here in the kitchen because there's a sight line all the way to the pool, and so that's why we moved the forward also, because he wants to have safety for the kids, and he wants somebody to keep an eye on him all the time. And then also, we moved it forward because the sunroom here, we want a sight line to the pool, and it was, it was a safety thing that Marty had wanted.
So, that would then, would be, also have been some of the design considerations with respect to the seeking to put the garage closer to Mousehole Lane?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And Jay, what the, the point that the neighbor brought up about the pool, and has that been secured enough to satisfy you under present circumstances, or?
I haven't gone out to see it recently. I know it came up once before in one of the other Barcliff applications, and I was told to leave it be for the time being, but I did reach out and tell the pool contractor to make it secure, and I think his relations with the property owner had broken down, but he said he would secure the, you know, secure fencing around the pool at that time. I will take a look at it.
Yeah, I, because I don't, I wasn't paying enough attention to that issue when I was out there. I mean, I, you know, I mean, so, okay.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so, so we took ownership of putting the, we put a four-foot orange fence all the way around the pool, you know, and, and just to keep, you know, kids from going in, and also, we've been draining the water over the course of, you know, the time being, you know, just to keep the water out of it, so there's no water in the pool other than just the silt from, you know, just dust blowing into the pool.
Okay. But I, and I, again, wasn't paying enough attention, but you, so the, the orange fencing you put there is generally a temporary type of fencing. Do you, are you, do you feel that that's secure enough to prevent kids from falling into the pool?
No, but it's gonna, it's gonna deter them to walk, you know, they have to climb over it, and there's no water in the, there's no water in the pool for the moment.
Well, I think no water in the pool might be just as dangerous or more so than having water in the pool, honestly.
Right.
You know, I think, you know, I wasn't looking at the time that I was out there with this in mind, but certainly, it's not, it's, it's kind of a detractive nuisance even when it's empty.
Yeah, well, it's outside the patio, you have the patio buffer, and we put it outside the patio, so it, so the distance between the fence and the pool, you know, is 10 feet to 20 feet distance, you know, surrounding the pool.
So, the fence is...
Outside of the patio.
Outside of where the proposed patio area would be.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's still essentially a temporary fence, a plastic fence, right?
Yep, and we, the neighbors actually, Bob was just up there, they actually asked Marty to do that, and, and we went over and did that for Marty this past summer.
Okay. I don't have anything else right now.
Any questions?
Could I just add one thing there?
Who said that?
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
I just want to say, the depth of the pool Bob mentioned was eight feet. It's not eight feet. In fact, one of the problems with the pool when it was constructed is it was too deep. It's meant to be, they have names for like a sports pool or something like that. I'm a, been a swimmer my entire life, also been a lifeguard for many years. I take pool safety very safe, very serious, and so I didn't want a deep end in that pool. So, it's, it's, if I stand in the pool, the water would be up to my chest.
Okay.
And so, it's, there isn't a deep end. It's, of course, if a child fell in, that could be a problem, but they're not falling eight feet.
I think we've heard enough about the pool at this point. It's not part of the application really anyway. It's concerning, and next time you appear, if you could take your hat off, that would be helpful. Okay?
Sure.
All right, so, let's...
Other questions? David Nixon? Oh, unless you have more questions, Mr. Act. I apologize.
Just one question. What's the overall length of the, of the house, including the portico in the front of the house?
The overall length?
Yes. Yeah, it's more than that. It's close to 100.
The site plan scales 99 feet.
99 feet?
So, almost, almost 100 feet. And the other question I had, you, I apologize, I didn't see the meeting with Historic, but this, this is the plan that Historic saw when they didn't impose the demolition delay?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And one other question, I've driven by this quite a bit, there seems to have been, there's been work going on it for quite a while. So, I guess my question is, it's been being renovated in the front, but just now you're getting to the ZBA to do the rest of it?
Yeah, so we wanted to move forward with the existing home, starting with changing out the windows. So, we changed the windows, we had to take off the front of the house to change the windows, you know, and so that, that's where you saw the change in the, no, it didn't change the aesthetic part of the house, but it was the same material went on, but we had to remove the, you know, the windows off, and, and that was the, that was the change.
Because it seems like it's been under construction for maybe three or four months already?
Yeah, we, yeah, and then, and then we took the windows out, there was horsehair plaster, so we had to go in for a demo permit for that because the plaster started to fall off the walls because it was sold, that we had to remove all the, you know, so then it, it ballooned up, and then we had to put insulation in and, and fix framing and stuff like that. So, we were doing that while we were waiting, you know, while we're waiting to do this process here for the addition, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Yeah, my question has to do with the massing of it, particularly when you're looking at from Mousehole or the west view, and I think it was brought up in one of the letters that Randy read. You've taken the existing situation, filled in the big gap, two stories, and then you've put a second story on the garage. It just seems to me like it's a big, long mass now. Do you feel that way, or can you?
We try, well, we tried to mimic the, you know, the, there's really no say to what the house is style-wise, like, it's a little bit of Greek vival, they say, but we were trying to mimic that 24, 24, and then, you know, we wanted to do the link building between, you know, and then attach it to that, you know, that same, you know, 24, 26 on the garage on the face. So, we were just trying to match, you know, match it all the way around, so aesthetically it looked, you know, nice to, you know, to the eye instead of what's there today.
Okay, thank you.
No more questions?
No.
Okay. Janie, questions?
Yeah, I had a question about the massing as well, so, and I think Mr. Nixon covered I have a question too about, so, the gross floor area, which is just another indicator of massing. I don't know if it's correct on this cover sheet, 6,157, because I can see where that from, going from 29, 16, to 51, 67, it's, it's a, it's a doubling, okay? So, that's an indication of mass, and when you look and see, I'm looking at this picture, the last picture in the packet before the historic narrative, and the comments Mr. Nixon made are right, that one middle section is going taller, the area that's open, that has no building, is going two-story, and then it's connecting to the garage that's two-story. So, it is quite a bit of massing, but can you confirm that 6,157? I calculated 4,600 square feet when I looked at, and I may be looking at the wrong pages, but I looked at A0A, A1A, and A2A, and you have modified these pages to include gross area added, so I just added those three numbers. And when I add those three numbers, I get 4,600 square feet.
Yeah, that's, that's what it's, yeah, that's 4,600 square feet. Yeah, it's not 6,000 square feet, what you're saying.
So, is that wrong?
Yeah.
The basement? No, it includes the basement.
Oh, includes the basement?
Well, I think it does. I'm looking again.
No, I don't, I don't think, so, I looked at this.
Oh, the basement garage, I'm sorry. Yeah.
They showed us gross floor area first and second at 23, 48 first, 20, 86 second. They didn't show it, show us on the basement drawing, but I did some calculations, and I came up with, because you subtract, it's a slab under the garage, so I came up with 1,850 square feet for the, in my calculations of the basement. So, that gets me to 6,284.
Okay.
Well, I don't know, our sheets gave us 61 something, but it's 60, 61, 6,200 square feet gross floor area.
All right, so, the, I'm just looking at A0A, and it had habitable floor areas 208, but you're not, you're not, you're looking at...
Yeah, I didn't try to look at the habitable part, just the gross floor.
Okay. Oh, okay, I'm thinking of living area, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, did you have, the, one of the neighbors made the comment about the road repair. That's a really good point. What do you do in those situations where it's a private road?
So, we, we had to bring in a new, a new meter to the house just recently. So, we, when the meter came in, that was, that was actually just repaired a couple weeks ago, that they patched the road. And if there's any, any, and when we, when we drive off the, you know, the road onto the lawn now, it's relatively flat, it's all the same, but if we have any trucks that are heavy, that would damage the road, we would re-repair that road. That'd be on us.
And we could condition you to do that in the event that we allowed this.
Yeah, we would, yeah, that'd be on us, any, any construction, you know, you damage the road, it's on you to fix the road.
Right, especially if we condition you to do that.
Yeah, and then to, because I was there the day that the police came, because we were working on the house, to talk to your point, and I, and I watched that, there was a lot of landscapers that were out on that road, and, and you had to get the trucks off the road, and we brought the trucks actually onto 172, we were working on, like, come on over, put them on the lawn, and so, there's, as an adequate space that we have to work with, we don't have a small lot, we don't have to be on Barcliff. Everything can be, you know, in the back, and it could be, and we can be on the side, and we can park in the front too with trucks, so.
Okay.
And, and to, you know, her point, you know, you know, I, I do try to stay out of the way of, you know, staying on, you know, you know, off the road when she comes back by. And then to the, to the garage, moving the garage, if you have a suburban that's 18 feet, and you're parked two feet away from the face of the garage, there's still seven feet left to the edge of Mousehole Lane. If you, or my truck, my truck's a, you know, a large truck, and, and that's the size of suburban's 18 feet, and so, there's seven feet left if I was parked two feet away from the face of the, you know, the face of the garage, so.
Okay. Other questions, Ms. Fenwick?
One more question. Did, so, the garage is moving four feet closer to Mousehole Lane in your proposal, which I think you said was specifically, is it only driven by the fact that the sight line to the pool, there's no other reason why you have to have it?
Well, it lines up, it lines up the house from the existing house, and then if you draw a line, you know, through the house, and it keeps, keeps everything pretty much uniform all the way back.
But you could move it back. You could move it back.
We could move it back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Steve?
Most of my questions have been addressed, but you touched briefly on parking of construction vehicles, but what about going forward when the house is all done? There's five bedrooms, which implies at least 10 people, probably more, and they, 10 people don't travel in two cars, so where are all these, the cars, is there any allowance for any kind of off-street parking, so they're not parking on Mousehole or Barcliff?
Yeah, so, when you, when you come into the driveway, and if you were there on site, before you pull on traffic, on the right-hand side of the property, or on Marty's side, there's a privet that runs right down, and so, there was plans down the road to put parking on that, two parking, three spots on that, in that area behind the privet, so they're hidden in their block from, you know, Mousehole Lane, and, and, you know, they, they won't be able to see the cars, they'll, they'll be, you know, tucked in, yeah. Okay. So, they'll keep, it'll keep all the traffic off Mousehole Lane and also off Barcliff. And I think Marty could touch on the number of cars that show up, you know, at his house. I don't know that answer, yeah.
Yeah, it's an existing five-bedroom house, so we're not adding any new bedrooms. It's exactly how it's been there. I've been there 16 years. So, if anything, even I sometimes, out of convenience, I'll park on Barcliff and just walk in the front door. So, I haven't had any problems with parking, and, you know, it's a pretty big backyard if I ever had a number of people, my whole family came over, you know, I could put, as the plan is, two, two next to the garage, three in front of the garage, and then, like on parade day, there's probably, you know, at least five, maybe six cars on my, on the Barcliff side, so that hasn't been an issue, and so there, there won't be, you know, it's not like I'm increasing the number of bedrooms and expecting more people at my house. As I get older, I want fewer people, but that's not the case. I just also want to say something about the size.
Okay, no, wait, these are questions at this point, so, all right. Any more questions, Steve?
No, that's it.
And Lee?
I'm a little concerned with the length of time that this project might take to complete. I know that when a special permit is granted, you have two years to start the project. you have two years to start the project. Is there any sort of, maybe Jay, you could speak to this. Is there any sort of timeframe to move it along? Because it is a busy area. And this project has taken a fair amount of time to get started and do and.
Unfortunately, there's not a timeframe or a schedule that they had to adhere to. Some people drag their projects on for five to 10 years, you know. Other people want to get in and get it done as quickly as possible.
And as long as the special permit?
They have to start within two years.
Okay, and as long as they have that, it's started, it's?
Well, yeah, well, a building permit also is only good for 100, you know, if they stop work for a period of 180 days, the permit would be null and void. And they'd have to start the permitting process again. But I think the special permit would be satisfied if they started within the two-year period.
Okay, got it.
Can I add to that?
All right.
Yeah, so talking with Marty, Marty said he pretty much already lost the summer with the work that we've, that we started. He had to move out, and he doesn't want to lose another summer. So we're looking to push the project through the summer, end of fall, and be done in the spring of the next year. So we want to, we just want to be a year at that house. I don't want to be, I don't want to be on that job for 10 years. But, you know, we want to be at, you know, for Marty to get in there and spend time with his family, we told Marty we'd have the job done in a year. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, Lee? So I have a question about your proximity to Mousehole. Are you willing to get within the setback? You know, closer? I mean, away from Mousehole? Not go any further than you already are to Mousehole?
Yeah, not to go any further than where we are. I'm just keeping with, you know, the safety thing with, you know, that Marty, you know.
If you were so worried about the pool, it wouldn't look the way it does now. So I can't really hear anymore about the safety of this pool. Because the way it is now is really inexcusable. And I don't really want to talk about how safe that pool is and how safe it's going to be, because it's really kind of bizarre. So you are willing to not go any further over the setback than you already are, yes?
Yeah, we can adjust.
You could do that.
Just for the garage or for the addition of the house? Because the house itself is the closest point to Mousehole Lane at 23.8 feet. The garage is 27.7.
Yeah, I was going to question that, too. Because for the house, they want to extend it a few feet. And because that's narrowing towards Mousehole, it puts the house like four inches closer.
Four inches closer or four?
Four inches, the house. But that's just by continuing a line of the existing house. So that's a little bit different situation than the choice to move the garage four feet closer.
So it's, we should be more concerned about the garage now? Okay, so you're willing to not put the garage as close as you've applied?
Yeah, we can move the garage.
Okay. That was like my only question for right now. So can I have a motion to move into deliberations and close the hearing?
I move to close the hearing and move to deliberations.
David, seconds.
Janie says yes.
Steve says yes.
Yes, Veach says yes.
And I say yes. Okay, so deliberations. Ed?
A couple things. Sometimes with public roads.
Microphone.
Sorry. Sometimes with public roads, the town will make a property owner place a bond in case there's any damages to the road. Would you be willing to do something like that?
Yeah, any damages to Mousehole Lane or Barcliff, we would, you know, we would address those.
Okay.
But I just want to say, there's a lot of traffic going down that road. So I don't want to be held accountable. In fact, you know, Bob has an excavation company he's brought.
Just so you know, we're not going to have you post a bond, because we don't do that. It's a good idea, but I've asked it before, too, and I lost that battle. So Sarah, do you want to say anything else about that?
At the most, the board could do is typically, in these conditions of a private roadway, is the contractor, owner, applicant would be required to bring the road back up to the standards it was prior to the start of construction. So in this case, it would be from Mr. McDonald's property line out to Barcliff for that portion of Mousehole Lane.
Okay, so I guess I would ask that you just document the current condition of the road and then agree to maintain that, I guess.
Yeah, we can take pictures.
Sure, yeah, sure. Other than that, I'll move it along here.
Well, you don't have to move it along. Do you want to say anything about whether or not you'd support it if you were voting?
I think if you can move the garage back to the existing 31, four feet, that would certainly help, alleviate some of your neighbors' concerns. I was out there today. The fencing around the pool is, I'm pretty sure it's already down, or it was down when I was out there today, the orange fencing. If, I'd like to see that secured better. I know it looks like you're going to put an auto cover on it by the design.
Right.
But some type of, you know, you can easily rent construction fencing that's, you know, eight feet high. That doesn't really cost you a lot to put around that until you can get it secured. As far as the massing, the house is getting much bigger than it currently is. But I, you know, Historic has approved this. And I've seen this type of design done in town before, where you're able to keep the front of the structure and you're able to, you know, sort of linear move it back. And that's what you're doing, and that's been done before in town. So I guess I'm okay with that. And also, you have a large lot for the area, a very large lot for that area. So I feel the house could, you know, the lot could support that.
Okay, Dave Nixon, deliberations.
Yeah, I mean, as Ed was just talking about the massing, the thing that bothers me about the massing of this is that it's a long, granted, it's a private road, as opposed to some of the projects that you're talking about, that goes back into a lot, like there's a number of them on Route 28 if you go up into West Chatham and all that kind of stuff. So Jenny, what number did you finally come up with this? The gross was 61 or something like that? Okay, yeah, to me, that's too much. It really is for this neighborhood and for, you know, the neighbors and what we're trying to do there in that neighborhood. And that's what's driving it to me. Secondly, I honestly wouldn't want to approve anything until everything that's already been started, everything, with all the permits that are out there, are finished. And then, let's go on to the next step. But to now, with what's unfinished, and as Randy said, we don't want to hear about the pool anymore, but the pool is unfinished. And the other things that you're doing in the house. To me, to add another one, that we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, finish what there is, and then we can talk about it. So for that reason, and mainly because of the massing, I could not be in favor of it.
Jenny?
I agree with several comments that my colleagues have already shared. It is a large lot, two-thirds of an acre. It's five bedrooms already, it's a large house. Historic did, it is a historic neighborhood, and it's a historic house. And they deemed it to be historically significant and liked the design. I agree with Ed that I've seen that sort of front facade, Greek Revival. I know this is a hybrid kind of Greek Revival. And they go long and they have small bump outs, which is why I agree with Mr. Veach. I don't mind the one that's four inches more non-conforming. I also like the fact that, you know, this is, this is a homeowner that has owned this property for 16 years. And they now have, for whatever reason, the opportunity to take action. And they're proposing restoring and renovating this house and not raising it and replacing it. So I think that that's, that's important to acknowledge that. So I appreciate that. But at the end of the day, I do agree the massing is a little much. Definitely the garage too far out. And the fact that it is almost doubling in size. I'm sort of torn, because I have seen that historic structure be very successful around town and other places. But to Mr. Nixon's point about private road, small neighborhood, historic neighborhood, the massing is a little much. That's what I think that, too.
Steve?
Yeah, I kind of feel the same. I think that if you look at this house straight on from Barcliff Avenue, the way it is now, it's a nice vintage, 20s vintage, 1930s vintage house. And it looks like a small house. Then if you move a little bit to the left or to the right and can get a glimpse of what this might look like from Barcliff, if it's done, and it's 100 feet long, that just doesn't fit well, I don't think, in that neighborhood. It's going to take up almost the length of that open space from Barcliff back to, there's some shrubbery in the back. It's going to take almost that whole length of Mousehole Road. It's a nice design, you know. I think you've done a nice job of bringing things together. But I just don't think it belongs in that area. I just think it's too big. And I think what David Nixon was saying was that I would like to see some things get finished first, because who knows what's going to change between now and when this gets done? And, you know, what else is going to, what else is going to just sort of fall by the wayside and get done kind of half-hearted? So I think it's too big. And if it goes through, I would like to see some completion on some of the other projects first, before this one gets started.
Okay, Lee?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I love what you've done so far with the front of the house. I think it looks really nice. You've obviously been working hard on that. This area of Barcliff, or Barcliff in general, is kind of a quaint, historic area. And this is a big house. And I know you have a big lot, but this is a big house. And I would echo Mr. Nixon's comments, too. It would be great to get something done, finished, and then move forward.
David?
Well, so let me just give a little bit of information. And I don't think this is necessarily going to change perceptions. But I took some time to go to the assessor's records and look up some comparisons in the neighborhood. It's interesting, because, so the proposed gross square footage for this is around 6,100, 6,200 square feet. If I go to Mousehole Lane, if I go to 26 Mousehole Lane, which is right behind it, I come up with gross square footage, gross floor area of 735 square feet. And go to the house next to it on Barcliff, which is 166, you get 6,524 gross floor area. You go the next house up from that, it's on the corner, it's 150, you get 6,066 gross square feet, gross floor area. So I'm, I understand, and I understand that this, that there's more massing, perhaps, than what is there with the proposal. But I'm not so sure, when you start looking at the numbers, that it's out of line with the neighborhood, really. So I'm more inclined to, and the other part is, I watched the Historical Commission, and they can be tough sometimes. There wasn't even a peep from them about any concerns about the appearance and its fit with what was there or anything like that. And that says a lot. There's been times when I have not agreed with them about other instances. But in this case, they seem to really like the proposal. And I do think the proposal does a good job of respecting and adding on to the house that's there. I've thought about it quite a bit. I, especially under, with the considerations that one of the neighbors wrote in their letter about, well, number of cars and possible rental and all that. We can't, I don't think it's right for us to be getting into this, certainly not. He was suggesting we think about conditioning. And there's no way I'm getting into any of that kind of conditioning just on our own, not without some direction from the Board of Selectmen or something, or more than that. So all things considered, at the end of the day, I certainly think that there, you know, I think that just moving the garage back would be, would help the situation, if it would help. I think that, but I'm inclined to give them a break. I think they've done a good job with it. And I don't think it's really, at the end, at the end of the day, when it's done, yes, it's going to be larger than what's there. But I don't think that that's, it's going to be significantly larger or larger in a way that's going to stand out. And then the other, and then the other thing that I looked at as a comparison, because it's, well, I said, this kind of looks like a house just down the street from me. So that house, so I looked it up, and it's 165 Main Street. It's Greek Revival, goes back with an L, garage in the back, space over the garage. It's on the corner of Lighthouse Lane and Main Street. In that case, well, they are 4,584 gross square feet. So a little bit lower, but it's the same kind of look. So I don't think the look that they're presenting is really out of place, wouldn't be out of place in my neighborhood, which is, you know, an historic district. So I could support it. But I certainly go along with the idea of, by shifting the garage, would make it a better proposal.
So I agree with the shifting of the garage. I also think that number five, impact of scale, sighting, and mass on neighborhood visual character, is very important in this one. Because if we didn't have Mousehole, then you wouldn't know that the house went so far back. But we do have Mousehole. And when you come down the street, you're going to see this big wall down, down a very quiet street. And it's not in keeping with the neighborhood. So I would not vote for it. I think you can come back and scale it down. I like the fact that you're going to put a foundation in, in a basement. That's really helpful. I'm sure Historic liked that as well. It's better for the house. And it's a better look. So you can count? You need four out of five? I'm not sure you have more than one. So would you like to withdraw, or would you like us to take a vote?
Well, I don't know if this helps, but today's my birthday.
Oh, yes, I've changed my mind now.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
So, yeah, we're going to have to withdraw.
Yeah, very good. So are you moving to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Okay, so if I could have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve request for withdrawal without prejudice for application number 24-007.
David, Veach, seconds.
Okay, Jenny?
Jenny says yes.
Steve?
Steve says yes.
Yes.
Veach says yes.
And I say yes, too. Thank you so much. And I, we look forward to seeing you at another point.
Thank you.
Randy, can I, just one little thing, I thought of my notes here. So the comment that was made about the construction and the road and stuff, I was on my way to a meeting here, coming down Barcliff Avenue. And it was probably the same, there's a container sitting in Barcliff Ave. And nobody's directing traffic, nobody, I'm sitting there. Not only was it a container, there was a delivery truck parked in the other lane. I'm sitting there, I'm going to be late for a meeting. So I understand the frustration. It's crazy that's been going on there, thanks.
All right. How about a motion to adjourn?
Okay, I move to close today's hearing, February 22nd, 2024.
David, Veach, seconds.
And Jenny says yes.
Steve?
Steve says yes.
Lee?
I say yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Veach says yes.
And you can vote on adjourning, I believe, right?
I vote "believe", yes.
All right, and as do I. And what time is it, Sarah?
7:02 PM.
Thank you, everyone, and good night, Chatham.